To order our regular meeting of May 13th, for the record, it is 6:33. If you'll call roll please.
Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Here.
Chief, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. All stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, we'll just take a brief moment of silence for the number of our constituents and neighbors and friends that we have lost this last month. We can remember their families and that the sorrows will be lifted. Counsel, do we have approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
There'll go approval of minutes for April 8th, 2014, regular meeting minutes. Counsel?
Move to approve the April 8th minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion, a second, any further discussion? None. Jake, on these, do we need a roll call vote or is it better to do that in any way?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. You know, Mr. Mayor, I think that the way the treatment of open meetings act issues is going, the preference is still probably a roll call vote, believe it or not, even on matters like approval of minutes.
Okay, thank you. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
B, April 22nd, 2014, special meeting minutes. Counsel?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
And April 22nd, regular meeting minutes.
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Not called for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, and we move right along to awards and recognition. So we'll move on to the police chief's challenge coin presentation. Now I'm gonna turn this over to Chief Weaver. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jim Peterson. I'm the executive director of the Taos Community Health Plan. The Taos Community Health Plan is a physician hospital organization. It includes the hospital and Taos health systems and a number of the local physicians in town. And we do a lot of business administrative type of work. And one of the things that I'm charged with doing is transitioning healthcare in Taos from a fee-for-service to a performance-based system where our doctors are going to put themselves a little bit at risk and they're gonna have to meet some performance goals in order to make the amount of money that they're used to making. And so part of that process is integrating behavioral health into primary care. And by doing that, we've formed the Taos Behavioral Health Alliance. And this is a group of behavioral health professionals that are working together very closely with the PHO and with the doctors in town to do some very progressive things with healthcare here in Taos. A couple of, I guess a month or so ago, we had an issue in the condo complex that I worked at with a young man, a young veteran, who had a severe brain injury from his combat tours in Afghanistan. And this young man had a problem, all kinds of behavioral issues that were causing him to be disruptive. And he was getting in trouble with the neighbors and with the complex, with the landlord. And it got to the point where it appeared that he was gonna be evicted. And part of the eviction process is that the, usually the, a group or a police officer will go to the house and issue the eviction paperwork. Knowing that this individual had a mental health issue, these police officers showed up and instead of displaying a overly aggressive stance with this young man, they decided to take the opposite route. And they spent eight hours or so talking to this guy. And they literally saved his life. He was on the, he was on the path of suicide by cop. He was looking for a reason to hurt himself or somebody else. And these, these police officers intervened and they did an extraordinary thing for the community and for this veteran and for all veterans, really. It was, it was above and beyond and something that should be recognized. One of the other things I'd like to say, though, is from another angle, what allowed these officers to think outside the box and do something extraordinary that may have been slightly different than what their protocol said for them to do? And that's leadership. And I think it's important to recognize the leadership of the police department that allowed these officers to do something above and beyond and outside of normal protocol and to do it without fear of reprisal. So, thank you very much for your leadership. And we'd like to recognize these officers, David Trujillo, Janie Davis, and Officer Barnes, Austin Barnes. Real quick, in addition to the recognition from the police department, the Taos Behavioral Health Alliance has decided to award these individuals their very first annual behavioral health awareness award for helping a member of our community in need. So we appreciate very much your service and what you did. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Officer Barnes is on, actually had a duty-related injury and he's home. We actually presented his plaque to him yesterday. So in the process of doing this, we actually go through an investigation, we actually kind of ferreted out information. And what we found was the individual that Officer Davis and Officer Barnes were dealing with that night, a year before Sergeant Trujillo had dealt with him. And I have no doubt at all that Sergeant Trujillo set the environment where this person would be willing to accept help from law enforcement officers. I have absolutely no doubt that Sergeant Trujillo created the environment. And in addition to that, Sergeant Trujillo's leadership, continuing leadership, leads to an environment in which our officers are allowed to do what Mr. Peterson said, which is to think outside the box and to be compassionate and to do a good job. So with Sergeant Trujillo, this reads, "On November 6th, 2013, you resolved a situation involving a person in mental health crisis. The subject showed signs of severe anxiety and fear and was complaining of chest pain. While attempting to get this person appropriate medical attention, his anxiety and fear became worse and he began to refuse all assistance. Seeing the situation begin to deteriorate, you took a compassionate approach to resolving this conflict by negotiating with him and creating a situation in which he could receive the emergency treatment he needed. This involved you staying with this person for an extended amount of time, coordinating several outside agencies, and eventually helping him to receive medical treatment. The amount of time, energy, and compassion you demonstrated to this individual is indicative of your skills and commitment to this community. I commend you for your professional actions and I award you the Taos Police Department Challenge Coin." You two look so awkward up here.
[laughing].
To see these two in the office, you'll understand there's two completely different personalities. Normally, normally I have spitwads being thrown at me, all sorts of stuff. Come here, my friend. On March 23rd, 2014, you resolved a situation involving a person in a mental health crisis. This person had recently been evicted from his apartment and he was in the process of trying to open doors and harassing the other tenants. Witnesses described a situation that was frightening to them and also described your response to this situation. It has been relayed that you dealt with this individual with compassion, created a situation in which he could receive the emergency treatment he needed. This involved you staying with this person for an extended amount of time, coordinating healthcare providers, feeding him, and eventually helping to restore him to his family. The amount of time, energy, and compassion you demonstrated is absolutely indicative of your skills and commitment to this community. I commend you for your professional actions."
So I'm just gonna jump in here real quick. I'm Kim Hamster, the CEO of Tri County. And what I want to present today is the greatness of this situation. I had presented here about two months ago, grassroots efforts called the Taos Crisis System of Care Implementation. And we are asking for committee members to join providers, consumers, adults, youth in the community. What we have proposed, and we're getting some attention from the state, but we need more support from the community, is having a system of care for people in crisis. So we can have a mobile crisis team of mental health providers and consumers that can help the police, that can call us, we can go, that can have a respite center so we can use, not use the jail as our current mental health treatment center for inpatient, so we can get people mental health care, not having to tie up the ER. And this is all woven into a lot of work that has been done the last two years to develop the system of care. We are now, the state is funding us to, they have brought a grant writer in that worked with us last year to help us get this rolling. And they are helping us do the policies and procedures, hoping that we can get governmental support to implement it in Taos County. But they are also gonna support us to take this across the state to counties interested in having real mental health available 24/7 to keep those people that are mentally ill or substance abusing out of jail, get them into treatment, and have all of the services within a community. And this is gonna take a community and a lot of push with the state and the town and the county to make this real. But knowing that we have some support at the state level to write the policies, I'm asking all of you to join us. Our next meeting is on the 23rd at 9:00 over at what used to be the Vista Grande High School. And we need you all to come and help us develop a program that can really save our community and get people the care they need. And had we had that, it would have been all of us working together and hopefully gotten to this man even sooner. So please support us and help us develop this.
9:00 AM?
9:00 AM on the 23rd at 111 Paso del Canyon West. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you, Officer. I think, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to really see our staff or police officers in our community highlighted instead of, you know, kind of hidden away. It's really important that our officers are really put up front and they get to shine. They do a lot of good in our community and a lot of people, you know, really look up to our officers. So thank you again.
Can I just say something?
Please.
I, I'm sorry, but I just wanna tell you that all of you, that you're all lucky. We have a lot of really great officers in this community. There were two other officers that assisted that day. And being in a small community, we have to think outside the box a lot of times. We used to have a, our jail or our PD was over here and we had what we called protective custody cells where we could take people that were cold, it was the middle of the night and it's freezing out and they're intoxicated and they're gonna end up being a popsicle the next morning. We can't do that anymore. So we have to come up with ways to, you know, get a hotel room, feed them. And this stuff happens every day and all the officers, I'm telling you, all the officers do these kind of things. So please support us because we do a very hard job and we do it to the best of our ability. But thank you.
Thank you. And so we'll go on to item B, recognize Taos high school cheerleaders. And I want to yield to Mr. Landgraf, you know, I think, you know, I appreciate you being on the board with us and we, I want to give you the opportunity and so I'm gonna yield to you. If you would, you know, we had a number of great teams this year, another, another great team coming before us this afternoon and just really wanna recognize not only our athletes in our school, but our scholars in our school. So please, if you would.
What you achieved this year was great. Being able to take a state championship in any sport is always impressive. And congratulations to all of you, all the hard work that you went through all year to get where you, to get what you did. So I'll start out with Alyssa Gentet. Ariel Wahlberg. Eric Marino. Moises Alcedo. Alia Gentet. Annalise Valerio. Ariana Valdez. Cody isn't here. Florence V. Hill. Krista Chavez. Marie Monjagon.
Do we have the right list?
Deanna Madrid. Mariah Valencia. Miranda Lucero. Monique Sisneros. Daniela Abeta. Gabriella Winter. Marissa Brown. Marissa Gallegos. Shaili Miera. Ashley Chavez. Angelica Fresquez. Haven Valerio. And to the coaches who oversaw them all year, helped them with everything. Lisa Abeto Valerio. Rachel Daggerio. Sorry, couldn't get that one. Maria Gentet. Congratulations to all the athletes and the coaches. You did a wonderful job this year and congratulations on the state championship.
So moving on down the agenda, counsel, we'll go on to citizens' concerns. Citizens wishing to speak shall live their, shall have their opportunity to do so and will limit it to five minutes. I've been pretty lenient as far as taking more than five minutes, but if we have a lot of speakers, we'll kind of hold it to five minutes. So the first one that we have on the sign-up list is Ms. Malanga. And good evening. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I am Ronnie Malanga from Artware's Contemporary Jewelry on the Taos Plaza, and I'm here representing the majority of the Taos Plaza merchants. This is regarding the economic development on the Taos Historic Plaza. Issue one, open vending and street closures around the Taos Plaza. In the past, there have been years of craft fairs on the Taos Plaza. While the town council meeting on August 13th, 2013 assures merchants that no craft fairs will be allowed on the plaza, there seems to be a new interest in putting open vending around the plaza along with future street closures. It is not fair to put extra burden on the merchants of the Taos Plaza with countless craft fairs, events, and open vending sales. The plaza businesses are paying for insurance, salary, rent, business plans 365 days a year. It is a disservice to them after struggling through a long winter to dilute their sales when the important holiday and weekends arrive. The merchants are faced with competing vendors that pay a minimal fee and generate minimal tax for the town. A goal of any town should be to assist and enhance the existing businesses to help them thrive. The plaza merchants listed below would like to offer alternatives to ensure the prosperity and growth of the retail community. Solution one, the Taos Plaza might be better enhanced with another type of partner. It would be great to make the plaza retail and educational center. A new opportunity exists with the development of the old county courthouse. While there is talk of the space housing a branch of the Taos Tourism Center, why not expand the space to include an educational center on the history and the current rich resources of Taos? There could be a space for the education of the history and currently active esecias, the film history in Taos, in New Mexico and the sustainable industry, the alternative building industry, and on and on. It could be called the Taos Discovery Center. The area museums and historic districts would also be able to educate the public on what they offer. The great resources of Taos that are missed by visitors and locals alike could develop a satellite presence in the center. This space becomes an advertising resource for all the cultural elements of Taos. Note, the schools could use an educational resource and have special tours. This might inspire the community pride in the youth of the town. On another level, lectures could be given to this center by the Esseki Foundation and the Solar Center and so forth. An artist's lecture program could be sent up during the lunch hour or evening. Santa Fe has lunch with artists program. This would be another reason to bring locals and visitors into the plaza. It would be a way to acknowledge the diversity and valuable resources in Taos. People might come to the plaza for a lecture or special display, then shop around and have lunch. It would make the plaza all that more marketable. Note again, this makes the Taos Plaza the hub of the community by acting as an educational resource for the region. Solution two, there needs to be some regulation on the type of programs that are allowed on the Taos Plaza and the Plaza gazebo. On occasion, loud and disruptive events have been held which have alienated locals and visitors alike. Loudspeakers, megaphones have made these programs even more offensive. This is not the place for political or religious forum and a ruling along this line needs to be established. Issue two, vacant businesses in the historic district. Solution one, a new program needs to be established to make use of the vacant retail spaces in the Taos Historic District. Property owners need to be educated about a new vacant space concept used in other cities. It's called pop-up retail concept. Vacant spaces are rented out to interested parties for a short period of time, month to month, on a term period for a modified rent amount. This encourages new businesses to take a gamble and try out a new business venture. Once the business is successful, for the rent, reverts to the going rate of the area. There's been very successful approach in towns and cities across the country. In some cases, realtors developed a campaign for property owners and advertise and regulate the licenses for pop-up retail. Conclusion, now is the time to address the proper economic development of the Taos Plaza. We, the merchants and property owners, are in full support of these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll go on to Mr. Northrup.
Good evening and thank you. I have three issues. I know I'll get to the fourth one. I may have to hold off till next week, next meeting. The town of Taos hands the Taos Fiesta Council $15,000 every year. In addition, Town Hall pays over $10,000 in employee overtime to provide support services. Last year, the town also purchased 20 booths for a total of $8,000. The town had no intention of using this non-existent booth space. The secretive Fiesta Council has refused to open its books to the public for examination, yet the town blindly turns over tens of thousands of dollars to them every year. The fiestas is primarily a religious event. Even if the religious component was incidental, it would still be a violation of the Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution. I'd like to ask Town Attorney Jacob Caldwell for his thoughts on the town's contribution to this religious event. Mr. Caldwell, do you care to comment?
No thanks, Jeff. This is a citizens' forum. Please continue.
Without question, the most egregious criminal activity in our community over the last several years has not been by gangs, drug dealers, Darren and Rudy, Amos Khan, or burglary rings. Rather, Donald, District Attorney Donald Gallegos, has orchestrated a campaign against the citizens of Taos using bogus subpoenas to corrupt his office and the judicial system. I urge this council to pass a resolution condemning the activities of Donald and urging New Mexico Attorney General Gary King to prosecute Donald to the fullest extent of the law. DMC Broadcasting News today states that this weekend's Mother's Day concert was attended by 9,000 to 10,000 people. The town ran two buses, the town ran two buses all day long on Saturday and Sunday beginning at 9:00 AM to shuttle the crowds from the two remote parking lots to and from the concerts. Chili line bus logs show that this 40 hours of bus time resulted in only about 100 people over two days being transported. I also observed the crowds at the concert and I believe that the two-day attendance was substantially less than 2,000 people, certainly nowhere near 9,000 or 10,000. As always, Darren Cordova is a despicable liar sucking town resources. Vendors at the adjacent craft fair say it was their worst craft fair ever. Several said they will petition to get refunds on their booth fees from the Chamber of Commerce. Vendors felt that the noise from the concert and the downtown congestion drove people away from their event. In July of 2011, I began to picket against the town's plan to move the E911 communications to the command center. Shortly thereafter, the town council considered the up-till-then uncontroversial, unexamined, and unquestioned move. Councilman Gene Sanchez tipped me off to the folly of the move. Councilwoman Amy Quintana had turned against Mayor Cordova months earlier when he turned into a vindictive monster in his attacks against Town Manager Daniel Miera, who was Amy's ex-boyfriend's son. Town Attorney Jack Kloff expressed grave concerns about the legality and appropriateness of the command center lease that Darren sprung on the council. Kloff's honesty would soon cost him his job. Several months later, Andrew and Fred won election to this council. During the campaign leading up to the election and the next 15 months, neither Fred or Andrew would speak to the command center move beyond supporting the move for, quote, "safety issues." They readily accepted the wholly flawed Bud Lake report without question. I addressed the council a dozen or more times. Gene Sanchez and Bill Whaley frequently wrote of the foolishness of the move. Even the town-controlled Taos news had lukewarm concerns. 2012 council candidate Judy Cantu was outspoken in her opposition to the command center, but the- but the public had yet to embrace the issue. Andrew and Fred, I ask each of you to now publicly acknowledge your mistakes in following the lead of the corrupt Darren and Rudy. Any fair-minded, informed individual in 2011 knew the move to the Command Center was a boondoggle. To this day, we learn more and more about the total lack of interest in public safety related to the E-911 move by the previous administration. The appeals to public safety were merely a distraction. Fred and Andrew, I ask each of you to apologize to the citizens of Taos County for your lack of due diligence and honesty as you supported the E-911 incompetency during the first two years of your terms. Would you care to address your support of that? I don't blame you.
Jeff, I have one comment, and I stand behind every single decision I've ever made, including that one. So, if you want to take shots, read the reports. You can't denote or deny what's in black and white. And I stand by every single vote I've ever made behind this desk.
Well, that's pathetic.
Done, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll go on to Mr. Rayal.
I'll save my comments for the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Pavel Lukas.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is a tough act to follow. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, friends and neighbors. First, I would like to urge the council to stay the course regarding our airport. I think it is of the utmost importance that we stay the course because the well-functioning regional airport is very important to our community from the economical point of view. There are tons of testimonials on the Internet that I won't bore you with with details because you can read up. For those of you who do want to know the facts, I have emailed each one of you one link to one of the studies. And I brought out two more links to study by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and one done by our neighbor to the north, the Colorado Department of Transportation, which will show to you how important economically a well-functioning airport is. The airport is not only an economic engine, but also it's a venue for many other functions. And admittedly, I am not objective because I'm a pilot, and there are many venues that are originating from our airport, safety-related venues, i.e. medical flights. And I don't mean just the helicopter that you often see. But a lot of us pilots are members of Angel Flight, and we fly patients from Taos to their treatments. I personally flew people to Denver, and I'm sure other pilots flew patients to other places in this country. And these are severely ill patients that need their treatments in a timely fashion, and a lot of times, these treatments are not readily available nearby. Also, an organization called LightHawk is involved in flights out of Taos Airport. And probably, if it wasn't for LightHawk, we might not have our national monument along Rio Grande because we have flown three or four flights flying members of the conservation movement. We have flown politicians, members of the media. And slowly but surely, one day, there was a national monument. And as a matter of fact, we were scheduled to fly yesterday with members of this council and the War Chief's Office to fly some flights in order to preserve additional lands that are treasures to this community. So, I won't take up any more of your time because there are others that will speak and will cover other areas of how beneficial this airport is. And as a pilot, it's important to have a crosswind runway because there are times when you cannot land in Taos because of the severe winds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I understand maybe up there in the video box, they're not on the live streaming. We're not getting any volume. If we can make check into that? Thank you. Mr. Chris Stagg. Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, member of the community. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you today about the Taos Airport. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the airport. I know you have been supportive of that, and over the years, the council's been very supportive of the airport, and I appreciate that. I think it's important to know how important the airport is to our community. It's not just economic development, but it's a real amenity for our community, and it provides a lot of things that maybe aren't seen if you're not a pilot. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Taos Ski Valley, a vice president up there, a member of the Village Council in Taos Ski Valley, and also a local pilot. And so, again, I really appreciate what the airport can do for all of us. It's economic development. It's important for the growth of the Taos Ski Valley. But more important than that, it provides fire suppression, medical flights. And the new runway will provide safety for all pilots using the airport. Plus, because it's a little bigger, it'll allow the larger planes to come in and actually buy fuel. And I think it'll enhance the financial viability of the community airport over what it is right now. So, again, I'd like to thank you for your support, and I'd like to ask for your continued support of the airport in the future. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Timothy. I think it's Woolridge. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Tonight. We appreciate your support in the airport. I'm going to make just a brief comment about the critical facility that the airport is in terms of fire. We've had the Hondo Fire. We've had the Pueblo Fire. We've had the Los Alamos Fire. And without that facility, these fires would have been extremely worse. The addition of a crosswind runway will allow us to use larger aircraft to carry water, specifically the big aircraft planes that carry water. In the Taos Fire, they made, I believe, one run with a big tanker. And the distance to Albuquerque to refill with fuel and water, they decided it wasn't worth it. And so, they only made one run. This tanker holds probably 10 to 12 times what a helicopter can do in one run. This facility is extremely critical to firefighting, both to the BLM and the Carson National Forest, and to all of us. It is, we are in a tremendous drought, and I think it's critical that the town supports the facility and the crosswind runway. The turnaround time would be a fraction of what it takes to fly to Albuquerque or Santa Fe with a big bomber to handle and put together slurry for large fires. We've seen what it can do. Los Alamos, during the Los Alamos Fire, I had Rio Grande Air. We couldn't land in Los Alamos. The helicopters couldn't land in Los Alamos. The bombers couldn't land in Los Alamos. And our regional airport supported Los Alamos Fire. So, we are really a regional airport. And the facility protects the whole region. And so, we thank you for your support at the airport. And thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thanks, Tim. Michael Diamond.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Michael Diamond. My wife and I live in Rancho's. We've lived there for five years, own a house, have worked on the house. I'm a retired architect, and she is a healthcare consultant. Had it not been for our airport, we would not live here, which may not mean much until you hear a little bit more. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you who, over the years, have worked on the expansion of this facility. It's critical for safety reasons, as Pavel and Tim have said. And it's also, I think, critical for the safety of passengers and pilots. I've been a pilot since 1957, licensed since 1960. And I've seen many, many instances of problematic landings and departures. And there have been some out here because of not being able to utilize the wind properly. But when we discuss airports in these kinds of meetings, there always seems to be the idea that the airport is the rich man's or the rich person's playground. This concept has proved time and time again to be pretty fallacious. And it leads, I think, to some very short-sighted responses to the potential of real good benefits to the community. Airports contribute a significant amount to the community coffers, both directly via fuel, gallonage, taxes, that sort of thing, from the on-field operators, and also indirectly through the monies that are spent by visitors for food, lodging, and other purchases in your community. Airports also generate funds for the community through monies that are spent by those who maintain their aircraft there. In my own case, just a rough calculation indicates that my wife and I probably support the community of Taos at a level of about $50,000 a year. We have 26 or thereabouts, 28, hangars on the field. If you take 20 of them just randomly and multiply that, you're talking about $1 million in direct income or direct spending in the community. And it ain't peanuts. Is it a rich man's game? Yeah. If you want it to be, it is. We have someone who is a regular here whose airplane is in excess of $10 million. However, if you go out on the ramp at the airport and just say, "I'll take that one, that one, and that one," you can probably buy most of them for less than what your truck cost. We just had an aircraft that was bought and brought to the field for less than $10,000. So, it's not necessarily a rich man's game, at least in my mind. In conclusion, let me just say that the way I look at that airport is that it is an extension of the Taos Visitors Bureau. You have people in cars who visit there. You have people in airplanes who visit us. And those of us who don't work there but fly there go out of our way to welcome those people here. They spend money here. They come back here. They frequently, or they do buy houses here. So, they serve at the airport a community and their friendly faces that are inviting and helpful to people who fly here. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Seth Brown.
This is Enrico with Taos 22. And we are, thank you for the notice of that. We are having an issue with the Comcast equipment, and we have a technician working on the audio file, the audio broadcast for the cable. We are live streaming with audio. So, we're working on that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, wherever you'd like.
Well, I guess I'm speaking pretty much for people who've been here really a long time. The valley was built by a culture that's very different than it is now. And it took centuries to create what's here, irrigated land. And it's basically been, I've been watching this since I was five years old. My family's been here since the mid-'40s. I've been watching how this beautiful environment here is being mined, in a way, is a way of putting it. The culture and the irrigated land is being mined for homes. And a lot of money is being made by doing that. But people like myself, I've had to move away from Orio Seiko. I can't afford to live there anymore. And a lot of my, the people that I grew up with, I was the only Anglo in the first two schools I went to here, are just being pushed out because of the cost of living here. Okay. So, that's my biggest concern, is large aircraft coming in here, potentially an airline even, is possible. People say it's not possible, but it is. I know that the Ski Valley wants regular flight service. I've heard this directly from the man who works for Lewis Bacon. So, that is what we're concerned about, is more and more and more pressure. And the pressure in some of the ski towns in the West is so huge that the locals have had to move away. And this is a very different kind of communities than those kind of communities. Okay, now I want to talk about the safety issues and how this airport thing came to be. It was always billed as a safety crosswind runway. My cousin is a pilot. He spoke at the EIS meetings. My brother is a pilot. They're no longer pilots. They can't afford it. So, the truth about a crosswind runway is that when the wind is blowing across the runway, it makes it very difficult and dangerous for small aircraft. And if you look on Google Maps, if you look at the towns around the northern New Mexico, southern Colorado, Arizona, they all have crosswind runways, and they're about 60% of the length of the main runway. And the reason for that is because when the wind is blowing across the main runway, you land into the strong wind. Let's say it's, let's say you need a wing speed of 100 miles an hour to land. When you're landing on that short runway during those conditions, you need a much shorter runway because you're flying into the wind. And therefore, if you look at these crosswind runways all around this area, they're all very short, much shorter, about 60%, 60, 70% of the length of the main runway. So, this isn't a crosswind runway issue. It was always billed as that. It's actually an issue by whoever is promoting this to put in a large, expensive, by the way, a real crosswind runway could cost a very small amount of money. It could even be gravel for safety reasons. But if it needs to be paved, it's a small amount of money compared to what we're talking about. So, what we're talking about is certain interests want a big runway for what reasons? I think there's some evidence from what's going on in Las Vegas. It's for military, large military aircraft, and for passenger jets to be able to land here. And that's why the Ski Valley wants it. And it's just very, very difficult for us locals to survive in this kind of environment. It's already bad. So, what my recommendation is, is first of all, why don't we have a crosswind runway? A real, true, 60% of the length...
A real, true, 60% of the length runway, why don't we have it here? We should have had it a long time ago. And my question is, is, was it not put in because there are certain interests here that don't want it there? Because if it is there, then they can't, they don't have the excuse for this huge, expensive runway. Okay, so that's another issue. Now I want to just quickly, and I'll be done. I have been going around and talking to people at the Pueblo, that was kind of my avenue in this. The people of the Pueblo were not included in this decision whatsoever, and they're upset about it. And it was just, it was Gil Swazo approved this with the previous mayor. And we had 20, over 20 years of EIS meetings, I went to all of those, and the community was against it, almost entirely against it. There was a few people, between 5 and 10% of the people, mostly from the ski valley and the pilots, that spoke in favor of the airport. But most of us are against this instinctively because we know what the potential is for this. And so we're going around and we're getting petitions, and what I want to just point out is that the council is elected to answer to the majority of the people here in Taos. And if we can show that a majority of the people here in Taos don't feel good about this and feel threatened by it, please consider this, because that's what we're doing, we're trying to show that the, the whole airport approval process has been done without our consent. We actually expressed our dislike of the airport, and it was totally ignored by the FAA and Darren Cordova and someone at the Pueblo, Gil Swazo at the Pueblo, I think it's Gil Swazo, I'm not 100% sure, that's what Philip Reyna told me. But, so that's, the issue is that we were bypassed in this whole thing, and people are upset in the community. I've been talking to a lot of people around Taos and the Pueblo, and they're not happy about the fact that we were bypassed in this decision.
Thank you, Seth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. I'm here to support the continued development of the airport, in particular, the additional runway. Thank you for your support up to this point. I'm going to kind of veer from my intended comments. My family's been in this area for several hundred years. If my ancestors took a similar approach to the previous speaker, very few of us would be in this room today. The comments about the 60% length of the runway, I have 34 years as a professional pilot, 21 years of that as an Air Force instructor pilot, 12 years of that as a test pilot. I will happily crunch the numbers so you can see the real numbers for takeoffs and landings in any condition out of the Taos Airport, but what Mr. Brown presented was not correct. As far as supporting the airport, I fly for three families in this town professionally. I also am the operations manager for the Taos Aviation Services. We service aircraft pilots' needs and passengers' needs. From an economic point of view, in the 11 years I've been there, almost everyone who flies in here after a year buys or builds a house, they furnish a house locally, they fill it full of art, they buy their cars here, when we had lots of dealers, they support the town. But generally, within a year, they're new residents. You can't develop a city and expect to have 1950 or 60 housing prices, it doesn't happen anywhere. Other things that the airport does for us, we get 40 to 50 medical flights out of here a month. Most people think we get two or three. We have a helicopter which is maintained, fueled, the crews are housed 24 hours a day at the airport, but they only probably do 60 to 70% of the flights, the rest are fixed wing, propellers, and jet aircraft. Because of a lack of a crosswind runway, in the last five or six weeks, we've lost three emergency flights that were going to Dallas. When they're really serious, certain conditions require the people to go direct to Dallas. In the jets that come out of Denver, it's an hour and a half to Dallas, the helicopter can't do it. The three we lost, the winds were blowing right down the middle of the new runway's heading, within 10 degrees, and it would have been no issue. The jets ended up diverting to Santa Fe, the passengers had to be loaded, driven down to Santa Fe, in that amount of time, they would have made it to the hospital. We just about lost one ride on the airfield. They brought him in from Cuesta, had to revive him in the helicopter, put him in an ambulance, hauled him down to Santa Fe, I believe he survived. The neonatal, we have, the only neonatal transportation in the state is a fixed wing aircraft, it's not a helicopter. So if you have a premature baby, it goes out on a fixed wing. There's a number rolling around that says about 85% of the time, the winds favor the runway we have. If your friend or family member happens to be the sick one on that 15%, you explain to them why it wasn't worthwhile to have that runway. What other good things does the airport provide? Pavel mentioned the Angel Flight, that's done at no cost to the, for cancer patients, done at no cost to the patient, the cost is picked up entirely by the pilot. We have six or seven pilots that fly it locally, I do, Mr. Diamond does, Pavel does. We fly the kids. We have a program here through the Experimental Aircraft Association, last year it became a permanent class at the middle school, it had 12 students, it's funded by a pilot, the teacher was trained at the expense of a pilot, the books are provided by the pilot, the kids get a scholarship and they go to the Aviation Academy in Oshkosh annually. This year we have 21 kids. We also fly those kids, I think that's bad news, we also fly those kids during the year, we're flying four of them this Saturday. We have another program, scholarships, that also goes to college students for the local area that we fly out of the airport. We usually do about five to six of those annually. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Lindsey Webb? You're not speaking.
Oh, Jonathan, I'm sorry. It just said Jay, and the wife from the...
I've lived in Taos for many years, I work in the film business, and in 98, I came back at the, on a request of the then-mayor, Mr. Peralta, and ran the Film Commission for here for about five or six years. We had some successes, and then in 2003, there was a film incentive program started in the state, as many of you, I'm sure, know. And it's proved so successful that I've been working in the film business for the last 10 years. I'm here because I hear the town council is interested in looking at other economic development programs for the town and the county, and I'd like to say that the film business, in my view, is one that we should definitely pursue. It's grown exponentially as, since these incentives were in place. I work, of course, for many film producers out of Los Angeles, New York, wherever, and they are all now, when they do their budgets these days, they don't do budgets for California anymore hardly, they do budgets for New Mexico and the other states that are leading these, this incentive program. Louisiana, Atlanta, what's that, Georgia, these days, they're big. But we've been, and when I was doing the Film Commission, back in the early 2000s, we started, I helped get these, this incentive program going, and we were the first state to do it. In those days, we had about 100 people in the union, now there's about 1,300 members of the union. These are well-paid jobs that allow people to live comfortable lives. But currently, the figures are here on this paper if you want it, and anybody else in the audience that wants one, I'd be glad to print it out. But it's getting almost up to $2 billion, the expenditure in the state since the film incentive program started, that's, that's direct expenditure. No economic impact factor is added to that. If you want to add the impact factor, it's obviously about 6, 6 million, if you use the 3 by economic impact factor that most people use for the trickle-down effect. Currently, it's, the, well, the jobs, the worker days created over the last 10 years are about a million and a half. And as I say, the union has grown, these are union jobs, obviously, that are, that are well-paid, but there are many, many other jobs that are concomitant with the film business, PAs and a lot of people that don't have union jobs. Anyway, over the last six years, the cash expenditure in the state has been around a quarter of a billion, 241 million is the average, since it really took off, which was about 208, you know, it took those years to get established. And what's coming to Taos? I don't know, because I'm away working in the film business, but I don't think it's very much, you know, since, since we did not have a Film Commission here. So it's, there's a huge political will in the state also to support filmmaking outside the two major cities. Now, they get 90, Santa Fe and Albuquerque get 95% of the film business, roughly speaking. And some of the shows do shoot a little bit outside the, outside the major cities. But, you know, I think that, my point is that if we want to have this business, if we'd like to get the economic impact, we need to pursue it, we need to have somebody who goes after it, as we did before when Mr. Peralta was the mayor.
Jonathan, one second, we have a question.
No, no, go ahead, and then I'll ask my question after you finish.
Okay. It's 25% across the board now, that's for everything that you pay GRT on. So those producers pay the GRT in order to qualify for the rebate. And it's actually 30% now for a lot of the television shows and some of the films that qualify by using a stage space that's 7,000 square feet or more. As I, so if we get a film here, we don't lose any gross receipts stacks at all, in fact, we obviously still get them, but we also get the economic impact in the rooms, in people working, in hires, in lumber facets. And what else was I going to say? Okay, we've got currently five television series in the state, working throughout the state. Each one of those has a budget of around 40 to 60 million, and every episode is around, you know, 3 to 5 million. So, you know, there's an enormous potential for, for economic development if we were to pursue this, you know. The Governor Richardson, as it's quoted here, he claims that there were 10,000 jobs in his, created during his, his time. So for what it would cost to run a film office, I believe there's a huge, huge potential with that.
Thank you. Councilman Peralta?
Just one question, Jonathan, and ask, do you know how many people in Taos work in the industry? I know it's not full-time, it's part-time, but how many of those people are union workers?
I don't know exactly, Fred, I, I'm afraid, Mr., sorry, Councilman Peralta, I don't know exactly what it is. I, I thought about that the other day, I think it were probably in 20 to 25. But, and of course, we all travel out of, out of town and live out of town, you know, there's a lot of guys, Johnny Long, Chris Painter, and Kate Sark, and all these people that I work with down in Santa Fe or Albuquerque. But one of the things the union, you know, as I was saying, there's this huge political will to get the films outside of Albuquerque and San Fe because of the complaints from, in fact, I think when Governor Martinez was running for office, she wanted to really examine what's going on with the film business because she gets complaints from OBs, Carlsberg, these other areas, you know, damning, maybe from Taos, that because she's, you know, the money is tending to be concentrated in the two major cities. And if we, and the union, one, can do two things to help, and I, and I know the BA quite well, he, first of all, will, if we get new members to come in, there's these mentorship programs. For instance, if I work as a location manager, if I find an assist, if I bring a guy up from a PA to an assistant location manager, the state pays half, 50% of his wages while he's learning the trade, as it were. And so the, the union will help us with that, they will help us, one of the things that they'll do is waive the fees for the, for the union members to join. And also, we could be nominated as a third production center outside the two major cities, which are, which are the production centers now. So if, if we can persuade a producer to come up here, he can nominate Taos as his production center, and, and he gets, you know, he gets to waive certain fees, putting people up and so forth. So there's a, there's a, you know, this is a massively subsidized program that I don't think we're taking advantage of. And if we're looking at different ways to develop, develop the town economically, it's there, you know. I think we, I don't know, I'll leave Councilmember Peralta to speak, and Chris Stagg was also on the board, and we had some success because we went after those years ago, when there were no incentives. And now, it's huge, it's the biggest booming, what's the word, you know, it's the biggest growing industry in the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So we'll go on, move on to, we appreciate all the comments tonight, please. Go ahead.
I wasn't planning to speak, but Mark Twain once said, "There are lies, damnable lies in statistics." And some of the, some of the statements here are in conflict with what I've learned. First off, someone mentioned bombers for the, for the fire service when we have a fire. I'm not sure what that means, but I think the most effective plane for fires is a C-130. And it carries slurry and water, and it's, it's really good for the fire, but they will, even with the extended runway, they will not be able to land here. They're going to fly out of Albuquerque, Pueblo, Colorado, and Durango. So that's, it's a moot point, because they, they won't be able to land here. The second thing is that, and Mr. Bellas can confirm this, airports, municipal airports generally lose money. We pay $105,000 a year for the maintenance of our airport. Taos Aviation Services gets a certain amount of money, but in the end, we pay $105,000. And the final thing is, yes, airports are for wealthy, wealthy people. You know, whatever they bring into this town is trickle-down. And someone made the point, you know, they, people will buy cars and so forth, but, you know, we've lost two dealerships here. So I don't know how effective that is. The trickle-down hasn't helped with the art galleries in town, so many of them are shuttered. I just think, you know, that this is a wealthy man's game, the town doesn't have bus service, reliable bus service to Santa Fe. That, that is something for the people. And, you know, I'm a little reluctant to support an airport when we really don't have a reliable bus service to Santa Fe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank everybody here tonight that stepped up and spoke, we appreciate it. So we'll go on to move matters from the staff, contract number TT 14133, San Miguel County Detention Center, Chief Weaver. They didn't haul them off to jail, did they?
No.
Council, we have a motion to table the asylum for, until he steps back in.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on.
You want to withdraw that?
Withdraw my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Withdraw the second, go ahead, Chief Weaver.
I'm very sorry, I found a box of donuts and I got stuck.
I thought they were Fright Twinkies.
Fright Twinkies, my God. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I was dealing with a personnel issue, and I'm coming back to you. The contract for San Miguel, what's happened to that? We're now in the process that all the prisoners are out, are out of San Miguel, were utilized in Taos County exclusively. We're in the process of closing out that, that account, so we're the final stages. Initially, we were allotted, or capable of spending $60,000, we need to go above that, so I need your permission to be able to close out, close out the contract. to go above that, so I need your permission to be able to close out, close out the contract. And I don't have the exact, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number in front of me. Do we have the background?
Yes, sixty thousand dollars?
I'm sorry, and I, I have felt.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty thousand dollars? Okay. So, we need, need approval, the, the money is inside the budgets, are earmarked, I just need your permission to expend it, and that's what we're trying to do right now.
Council, Councilman Peralta?
Chief, just one question, are you going to, is this contract available for renewal?
Yes, sir, it is.
Are you gonna renew it for fourteen, fifteen?
No, sir, we don't intend on doing that.
Not even as a backup?
We're talking to the, to the jail administrator down there, let me back it up, that's actually a pretty good idea, we probably should.
I'm just thinking as if, if Taos, for some reason, gets full.
Right.
We should have a contract in place that guarantees a certain cost to, to put a, a prisoner in. That was my only thought, not that we wanna use it, it's just strictly as a backup.
Yeah, you know what, Mr. Peralta, a good point well taken, I agree, I think we probably should.
Manager, what do you think? Rick?
I would prefer that we develop in our agreement with the county a local preference, in which case, if you had a good space there, that would be the county's responsibility to. It would be the county's responsibility to transfer prisoners out. There are occasions over there where they do wanna move people because of the type of record they have, or they may have a family affiliation or a gang affiliation, but that I really view as an internal matter in administering the jail, and the preference should always be given to local prisoners, that was the purpose of the bond issue.
I understand that, but there, there could be a situation where they don't have space for, for us to put one in there, and you were saying, are you saying then that they would have to accept them and then they'd move them? Is that what you're saying?
We, we can do both, we can extend the current agreement, and at the same time, though, I, I still think we should, it's been a verbal understanding, but if it's not already in writing, we should have it as part of our MOU JPA that we recently did.
Mr. Cobble, do you happen to know?
I, I don't believe there was language in there to that extent, it was more or less focusing on the rate.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I, I kinda missed the conversation regarding, is the issue transport that's being discussed?
No, there's provision, I believe, in my reading of the contract we have with Taos County, that if, if they're full, they have, they have the potential not to accept a prisoner. And all I'm trying to say is that if we had a contract with San Miguel County as a backup, in other words, you only use it in case of emergency, that if Taos County was full, we need to put somebody someplace that we would have the ability to go to San Miguel County with that person, not that we would ever use it except in an extreme emergency.
And, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, I, I think that's a good idea, I think there are several bases under which the county could deny our detainees, and it would be good to have a backup. Incidentally, the, the current contract with San Miguel County is good till December thirty-first of two thousand fourteen, so there is time to make that decision. The request before you today is merely a spending authorization request, it's not for purposes of amending the contract amount with San Miguel, or the time, it's simply to get the council's blessing on additional spending beyond what was already authorized.
And I understand that, because, you know, in our approval of the contract with Taos County was, this was gonna be our exclusive place to put prisoners, but I'm just saying is that, you know, there's, there's always the Murphy's Law that can take place, and I just wanna make sure that we've made a provision for Murphy's Law, and I, in saying that, when this contract comes due in December, maybe we should look at it, then an extension on it, just for the purposes of having a backup. So, I'm just asking the council to consider that.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor, Gonzalez?
Chief, what's our average occupancy rate at the Taos County Jail? And how many of those are ours?
Oh, how many, how, what's, I, I believe the Taos County is normally in the area of, if I recall correctly, last time I talked to Mr. Archuleta, in the area of sixty, sixty, seventy percent-ish. I know that their, their break-off point, I believe, is when it gets to eighty percent, and when they get to eighty percent, they're actually able to, at that point in time, seventy-five dollars a day, actually, they're not losing any money. What their daily occupancy is, I don't know. We, we normally, as it stands right now, we have a number, number of prisoners that are in there that are charged with the state and also with the municipality, and when that happens, we don't expend any money on them. So, I believe this month, actually, I don't believe we've had any prisoners inside there that we've expended any, any money on so far. And that's kind of the way that this flows, there are times when we pick up someone that has multiple warrants, they hire, have a higher court than actually goes to a state charge, and they actually pay for it right then. I do, I do, I do expect, and I spoke to Judge Fanbro and Judge Chavez, as we've talked about before, there's a lot of moving parts to this, we're actually trying to deal with mental health issues and recidivism, et cetera. And, and I do expect that our incarceration, the amount of money that we're spending, will go up for a little bit. And I think that's gonna be a kind of a functionality of keeping all the charges and keeping everyone here, but I also believe with some of the other stuff we're implementing, that we should start seeing over time, that we should start spending less for the jail, that's what our hope is.
Mr. Mayor, I guess that, I kinda hear the sentiments that Councilmember Peralta is making in, in two different angles, number one, capacity, and number two, should personnel be at a shortage at the, at the Taos County Detention Center? Without a backup, would be cause for them needing to go somewhere else. So, I, I mean, I highly recommend that we at least look at it.
Right, and, and my recommendation, if they get in the situation which is moving prisoners, obviously, my preference would be they move prisoners that are not municipal, and that we still maintain our core of inmates so that we can provide the services that we need. I think the message has been pretty well clearly defined, and also, I, I highly understand and agree with Mr. Peralta, there does need to be a backup, 'cause Mr. Murphy does knock on the door.
So, Mr. Bellis, you might keep that in mind, see if we can bring that back.
We will.
Before the contract expires. Council, let's see, which is the council?
Move approval.
You have a motion to approve with a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
No.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
I'd like to understand this better, I'm not gonna vote on this one.
You have to.
I have to? No.
Mayor Buroni?
Yes. So, thank you, Chief.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for my.
Thanks, Chief. And just for clarification, Marietta, this is, or Chief, this is just, this is an item, that the money, the contract was already in place.
Yes, sir.
We spent the money.
Yes, sir.
And we're just moving money from one budget line item to another budget line item.
Actually, Mayor, the threshold of sixty thousand dollars is your approval, anything over sixty thousand needs to be moved by county, so the money's in place, there's no budget money moving, it's just authorization up to sixty thousand dollars, and we've already expended that amount under this contract, which is sort of open, and there's not a amount.
Thank you.
And again, Mayor, this, and Council, this is just to close out our bills, so to speak, with San Miguel, for people we've already had there, and they're now exiting the system, or at least is our responsibility.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Out-of-state travel request, Mr. French Espinosa. Consideration approval of out-of-state travel for Brandon Gutierrez and Leo Valencia to attend the twenty-fifth annual Community Transportation Rodeo, to be held on June seventh, eighth, two thousand fourteen in St. Paul. French?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you read the backup, Brandon Gutierrez and, and Leo Valencia both placed at the state-level competition, Brandon took first in the bus and Leo took second in the, in the operations of a, of a twenty-three-passenger bus, and as a result, Brandon received a scholarship of, of one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, which is an all-expense-paid trip to St. Paul. And on the other hand, Mr. Valencia received half of that fee to go compete at the national level, and we are seeking approval of the council for out-of-state travel.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And then discussion, Counselor Peralta?
So, what is the, the total cost to us to send them then if they, one received a complete scholarship and the other received a half scholarship?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, would be half of fifteen, fifteen hundred and eighteen dollars.
So, the amount that we have here, estimated cost, would be roughly about?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars to send them?
Yes. Per each?
No, that's.
Just for both?
That's total, because one of them got a full paid scholarship.
Paid for the whole thing.
And the other got fifty percent.
Okay, so, so I'm just looking at the summary here, it says three thousand dollars, but that's naturally not our cost, our cost is only a quarter of that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
So, I will go on to item three, I mean, C, Resolution fourteen twenty-two, septic discharge, Mr. Espinosa?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council. This was brought before you and was approved back in February, and it is for the discharge of septic at the wastewater treatment facility. We, we took the information back and, as the council had, had approved it, and we put some numbers to it, and come to find out that it's not financially feasible for us to implement that resolution as it was adopted by the, by the governing body. We did ask CH two M Hill, our, our consultant or our contractor of the, of the plant, to give us a proposal in where they would be managing the operations of the septic receivable station with the hours of operation that were adopted by the, by the governing body. And it turned out to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on top of what we're being charged currently. Staff's recommendation is to manage the, the septic receivable station under the hours of operation that the plant is actually open, which is listed in the resolution, which would be very little cost or no cost to the current contract that CH two M Hill has with the town of Taos. The legal counsel has taken a look at this and made some, some revisions to that document, I believe it's part of your packet, and again, we are, we are seeking approval to move forward with this resolution.
Counselor Peralta?
French, have any of these fees increased in this resolution, or are these the same fees that we passed back in February?
Mr. Mayor, member, Councilmember Peralta, they have not changed, they have not changed, they're based on the load capacity of, of the, of the tanker that is coming into the plant versus the gowns that are, are discharged. The reason for that is so that we can help capture, in, in the event that the totalizing meter goes down, we still know what, what the capacity of the truck is, versus being told a different story, because the manifest may be doctored. So, instead of doing it per gallon, we did it per truckload. And, and, and the fee did increase.
Back in February, right.
Back in February, as well as today, yes.
So, is it your anticipation then with this fee that we will be able to cover the cost of manning that station?
Yes.
Have all of the improvements been made to secure that location?
Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, yes, we, we have, the, the cameras have been installed, the totalizing meter has been repaired, the pH meter has been replaced, and I just signed the, the quote for the fencing that goes around the receivable station. And in addition to that, we are working with the contractor to go and construct the, the containment area, which is, it's about sixteen-foot of concrete wall to contain any potential spills.
So, when do you anticipate that the containment will be completed?
The containment should be done by the end of, of June, if not sooner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just one question, French, on page two of seven, just under the fee, fee schedule, it says, it used to say, "In the event of an after-hour emergency, the septic receivable station will notification," et cetera, et cetera. And we've changed it to say, "In the event of an after-hour request or emergency." I'm a little concerned that that leaves us open, that somebody could come forward and just say at two in the morning or Saturday afternoon, "I'm putting in a request," and it says here, "You have to honor that." I mean, is that exactly what we wanna say there?
Mr. Mayor, Rick, I will defer to legal counsel on that.
Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council, I think it's a double-edged sword, I think if you say just emergency, you're limiting the retrieval services to cases of emergency. At the same time, I understand your concern. Mr. Bellis, I think we could insert language that leaves after-hour requests at the discretion of the supervisor in order to deal with that concern, or take it out entirely.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Mr. Councilman.
Mr. Manager, I think my biggest concern with, you know, removing that language is that that sewage would end up in a ditch somewhere, or the river, so I would more than likely ask that we keep it in there, I mean, it will be under, I think, most, under the most extraneous cases, an emergency, when you look at what the tipping fee would be. I did have another question, though, French, with regards to the, the once, the one-time used lot that we had by the recycling center for septic, septic discharge, why don't we use that anymore, other than just smell?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, that was a concern, was, was the odor and the frequencies that the, that the contractors were using it, and basically, the concerns came from the residents at CAV. In addition to that, we didn't have a method of monitoring nor measuring what was being disposed into the manhole.
And I guess one of the reasons I just look at that, French, is that because that facility is typically manned anyway, right? I mean, not for that purpose, but, I mean, there's somebody always around in that area with the recycling center.
Uh, yes.
So.
Between normal business op, hours of operation.
I, I, I get the odor thing, but that is, Mr. Mayor, our M-one district, which is our commercial zone, and, you know, I, I, I can completely sympathize with, with CAV's request, but yet, at the same point, you know, for us not to utilize our full capacity, you know, I just, I have questions with that. The other being is that should a private company come in and wanna do the same, are we gonna bind them to the same circumstances because of the fact that it smells, yet it falls within the purview of what the, what we're zoned for? So, Mr. Mayor, I guess what I'd, what I'd ask staff to do is, Rick, if we can take a look at what that option would be, cost-wise, and maybe what it would do also to the impact of this issue of us having to man a facility after hours, I mean, just the convenience of being closer to town. Still, I think maybe the frequency would drop if you're charging by the truck as opposed to by the, by the gallon.
And I guess, French, a question I would have, then you would have to put pH monitors and, and all that type of stuff there also, correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's correct, we'd have to build. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. We'd have to build the same type of containment and install the same types of measuring devices for accountability.
Okay. Mr. Rayel, did you have a comment?
I'd like to comment what Andrew is kind of talking about, but I'd like to say a few things. But it is, Andrew, thank you, Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak. The time I look at Rick Bellis, I see one of the twelve disciples with all that hair. I wish I had it. But a concern that we gotta have, Councilmember Andrew, is being able to protect what's being dumped. To just say, well, we have this commercial place, we should be able to dump there because it's commercial and if it smells, it smells. But see what's going on right now at the wastewater treatment plant. I have my own DP four sixty-five through groundwater department. I've had it for twenty-eight years. I've had it before the town of Taos has ever had a place to discharge waste. And that, my site was designed to help the wastewater treatment plant to be able to take what they can take and to be able to handle emergency that they've not been able to handle. But the way it is at the town of Taos right now, the wastewater treatment plant, when we talk pH, what are we talking about? Because the pH on fuel, paints, anything that's dumped from an art gallery, from a restaurant, pH is not going to stop it from being dumped into the wastewater treatment plant. And I have recommended, I have spoken to the mayor here, and I have recommended that you have to really tighten it up. It's good to have a place to accommodate everybody that has an emergency or needs a tank pump. But you also have to be able to take care of the wastewater treatment plant. It's just dump here, give them an hour, let it dump in a hole. That's not the way it works. The way it works is protect the wastewater treatment plant from paints, oils, from grease. See, that pH is not going to ring a bell if there's any type of chemical that's going through there. It's a pH. Another thing, the way it's being received today, there's a camera, but the camera can't see what's going. There's a, the truck backs up, there's a hose, they connect, and then they tie it into this meter. And I've spoken to town manager here, and I mentioned it to him, there's no way of knowing what's going through that hose. The only way you can really take care of the plant, if you're really a true environmental person that wants to protect our waters and what's going into the wastewater treatment plant, is to be able to disconnect that hose, have somebody there monitoring and smelling what's going through. Because it's important. You can smell gas, you can smell paints, you know if it's, you know what, going through. So there has to be something there to protect the wastewater treatment plant. I don't, it's been, he talked about, how much are we paying or how much are the septic haulers paying? I don't believe what's on here right now has been given for the septic haulers to pump. I think it's still on hold. I don't think they're paying the forty-five dollars for one thousand to two thousand gallons. They're not paying that. And you need to start charging. If you have to increase, well, it's good to increase and take care of the plant. It's, I've seen it, the plant operating in a manner of a very lacy way. I gotta give this guy credit. Of everybody I've worked for, worked with, he's the only one that has really tried to get, he submitted the right resolution the last time. The council, I don't believe even read the resolution because they, you know, voting from seventy-seven, he himself said the cost was extremely. And I just believe raising the prices, they should be putting a man there and taking care of the wastewater treatment plant, seeing what's dumped is very, very important. Because if you can dump, the meter's not going to register fields, paints. It's just going to register a pH, okay? And I just wanted to kind of go real quick. I know time is very valuable. But on, they talk about the hours from Monday to Friday will be eight to four. It says holidays will be completely closed. But I was talking to French and I was asking, well, what is closed? Does that mean it's closed to emergency work? And I would like one of you, if you could answer me, is a holiday considered a holiday where everything is closed or is it open to emergency work? If you could answer one, answer that one.
French, in writing the contract, Jake, that is under the stipulation after-hours, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. If it is to open, regular hours from Monday to Friday, and anything after that hour would be a hundred dollars fee if they went to dump there. But my question is, if it's a holiday, you're paying the town of Taos employee more to go to that gate and open up. And does that person want to be there for Christmas, Thanksgiving, Easter? Do they really want to be there? You know, I've tried to utilize my site for emergency work for all these years. And all these years, I just haven't been able to use my site and work back-to-back with the town of Taos because it's the type of service they have, allow twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. And it's just really hard to even get my site going. You know, I'm there for emergencies. Everything else, I'm there to help, you know? And the other thing that I want to kind of really assess, ninety-eight percent is waste from the county. Over here, it states that there will allow commercial, small commercial waste. I guess my question to you is what is small commercial waste? Number one, you don't have any jurisdiction over the county. Usually, with all the experience I've had, usually they'll have a small grease trap, and that grease trap ties into their septic system. And when he says small commercial waste, well, guess what? They start taking a large amount of grease to the wastewater treatment plant. And it's there. I've heard that they have to clean the filters. The grease is there. They're asking the septic haulers where it's coming from. But I really feel when you, you're going to actually go and be able to receive commercial waste, you're going to expect to bring a lot of grease. And if that's how they want to work it, or whether, I would assume that it'd be really good for them to be able to visual and see everything that's flowing through. There's a lot of restaurants that are in the county that are disposing of the grease over here, septic haulers. So I mean, these are just little issues that a person has to really look. What is it all about is to protect the wastewater treatment plant, protect our waters. Sure, it's good to help everybody around the community, but when you don't have any jurisdiction through the county, I really believe strongly you ought to really have jurisdiction when they go back over there to dump the wastewater.
Thank you. French, anything else?
No, sir.
Counsel, what's, Mr. Peralta?
I was just thinking of something, French, here. And since we're charging by the size of the vehicle rather than by the number of gallons, is there a reason to use the meter? Couldn't we use an open visual dump funnel, basically?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, to answer your question, yes, we probably could. However, when we're doing the reporting to the state, we like to be as accurate as we possibly can with septic being accepted at the facility. So in addition to counting loads, we also have, of course, the flow meter that's calculating the septic waste itself. That's much different than the rassewage coming in in the collection lines.
So we do have to report to EID the amount of septage that we take into the plant?
Yes.
It's not, it's not just any sewage that's going in? Then it's a separate reporting from what comes through the normal collection?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, that's correct. The same issue exists with our interconnect agreements with El Valle, El Prado, and Taos Pueblo. We try and separate those to try and determine where the, where waste is coming from and how much of it. It's the same idea, and it's reported to the state in that fashion.
Can I say something, there? The trucks are required through this resolution to have a way of monitoring how many gallons they have in the truck. So, you know, they go in a truck and they can actually monitor, see where the truck's at, and estimate exactly how many gallons are being dropped because they're required to have glasses, right, monitoring devices to be able to monitor how much is in there. I still say it's a big issue of knowing what's being received. If it's all, you know, if you're not knowing what you're receiving, then you're jeopardizing the wastewater treatment plant. That's all it is.
And French, I just want to clarify on page two of seven, where it does address the service fee. That's above and beyond the cost per load, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, where are you?
Two of seven. It says a service fee of a hundred dollars per manifested truck will be assessed to the respective account. So it's the hundred dollars plus the, if they come in with a two thousand to three thousand truck, plus the fifty-five dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that's clear. All right. Counsel, any other?
Yeah, I also have a question. I was just wondering, you know, I was looking into this last October also because I sat at the wastewater treatment plant watching the septic haulers dumping where, you know, nobody was monitoring and it was easy access for anybody. It was a concern of mine way back then. But, you know, I am new at this and I'm not an expert. And I was wondering if you could, what is exactly this resolution wanting in a nutshell?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Conto, basically, we're trying to get more of a handle on monitoring of the discharge of septic waste that private haulers are bringing into the plant. And hopefully try to curtail any contaminants that are going into the plant as Mr. Rayel has mentioned to you before.
Oh, okay.
And again, that in the event that the local environment department asks for any of those types of manifests to see what the septic systems in the community are, how they're working, that would be, that would help him determine that because it would be an indicator as to how many are actually filling and in what areas based on the manifests in the event that they request that information.
Okay. Thank you, French. When I was out there watching, there was nobody monitoring anybody who was dumping their loads. And mixed loads was a concern of mine then. And I was just wondering, is there somebody right now who is checking the loads for mixed? Just as Mr. Rayel said, you know, small commercial, what are they dumping? Is there paint? Is there grease? Is there, you know, is there somebody manning that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Conto, at present during the hours of operation, there could be someone that is, that does conduct a visual inspection. However, between the AM hours of seven AM to eight AM, there is nobody present because the plant is not in operation at that hour. The same holds true for Saturday and Sunday operations and anything after five PM. So again, we're trying to tighten up our operations and have someone that does spot inspections on a more regular basis.
Can I say something? When I came to talk to him about a resolution, I went to Santa Fe, and I went and saw exactly how they disposed of their waste. And they do have a person watching. They do, they don't have a hose running there. They're watching and checking how many gallons they have there. And one thing they have there, and I mentioned it to him, but I think Mr. Peralta spoke on that, is Santa Fe wastewater treatment plant does not allow anybody to mix loads. So the reason why they don't allow, say, this septic and that septic, if this one is contaminated, how do they know which of the two septic tanks that that contamination came from? So the whole idea, if it's just that one tank and we're not mixing tanks, we're taking this tank back to where you brought it. But when you mix tanks, you don't know who's who. And I thought that was something that should have really been, you know, enforced because it's, you know, if somebody really puts paints or you do a, somebody has oils and stuff and you do two tanks. And that's another thing that French does know about is that they can get a dirty tank, they can go pump four or five grease tracks, traps, put them in that tank, mix them. When they go dump them, they'll never know those grease traps were in there. So I just say the stricter you get in receiving in the station, the more protection the plant's going to have. I know quietly, there's a lot going on in the plant with grease. And I think it should be addressed and a concern. You know, Anthony, that takes care of the plant, I wish that he would speak on and tell him the issues of grease and what's going on there so it could be addressed, so the plant could be taken care of a lot more carefully. So, I mean, I'd say what I could if you...
Counselor Han?
Thank you, Mr. Rayel. Thank you, French. And as I recall, as discussions started back in the fall, there were issues of containment wall. It sounds like that's being addressed and other safety issues. It seems to me the hot-button topic was trying to make it customer-friendly, opening it from seven to seven, seven days a week, something like that, unmanned, verified with camera usage and punch cards or some kind of ID card. Do I got that about right? And what I hear you saying tonight, Mr. French, is that you've done a cost-benefit analysis on that and expanding hours and increasing, not surveillance, but a worker out there is going to be cost prohibitive. Is this resolution, and I read it Saturday, and I've forgotten, I'm sorry, but I speed read it Saturday and a bunch of things to read Saturday, is this resolution dealing with the expanded hours? Our regular hours will be from eight to four. And then if you have a card, you can go ahead and dump prior to eight and after four, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Han, no, that's not correct.
Okay.
It's, the hours that are listed in the resolution is when we would be in operation. Anything before or after that would be considered an emergency and would be charged at a rate of a hundred dollars plus the tank size.
And that would involve an employee going out to the site?
That's correct.
And the site is unavailable, it's locked up after hours?
It will be.
And you're working on tighter monitoring?
That's correct.
To address the issue that Mr. Rayel is talking about?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a real concern. Did I hear this right, that we used to allow septic dumping over there by the recycling center? Is that?
And other places, they...
Okay. So let me just cut that one. I am so totally opposed to that. It just makes me cross my eyes. There should be no dumping of septic within city limits, period, end of story. That's a safety hazard. I'm totally opposed to that. I don't care for whose convenience it is. They need to adapt and adjust and go out to the facility. So enough said on that. Mr. French, let me just ask you. You're the expert. In your opinion, this Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two, can you stand behind this? Is this what you want to see? Is this what you want to see happen?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn and the rest of the council, yes.
Good enough for me.
Councilconsuls?
Mr. Mayor, the, the concerns that I have with, you know, restricting hours, increasing fees, making things harder is that this sewage will end up, I guarantee will end up in our oils and our streams and in our groundwater. Um, and what'll end up happening is that the more we increase fees, the harder it's going to be for the general public to empty their septics as well too. Um, so that's where my concerns lie, Mr. Rayle. I understand the fact that you have the ability to, to dump at any time you want, um, but that doesn't qualify for the rest of the, of the sewer, sewage haulers out there. So I'm trying to make a fair and equitable decision that, that benefits everybody, um, with regards to making sure that we do number one, which is protect our environment, um, and not give a reason. I mean, I would think we have more latitude to mediate, uh, grease dumping than we do to mediate groundwater disturbance.
I guess what you said, what you said there, um, is them having low rates, I don't think they're low rates. You pay more for city sewer per month than what they're paying to dump a tank that's been in the ground ten, twelve years.
Yeah, but you do that opposed to them not cleaning it at all?
No, but what I'm saying, you're talking about cheap rates. You're charging city sewer rates higher than what it takes a tank that's been dirty for ten years to be dumped there. So if it was even a hundred dollars to dump there, that's still cheap for ten years. Multiply ten years times twelve, how, how much a person with city sewer is paying? You really, you, they're really not paying much because they're not tied into the city sewer.
But the thing, Mr. Rayle, I have to look at is the fact that how many of these residents can barely afford to make that sewage, sewage dump to begin with.
I guess I would just answer you, how many can afford to pay city sewer?
That's part of the privilege of living within the city.
Same, same thing, you're, you're charging for forty, fifty dollars in sewer rates per month. We're talking somebody hasn't pumped their tank for twelve years.
Council, what's the wishes of council?
Who for approval, Mr. Mayor?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Discussion.
Discussion, we need a second.
Second.
And then discussion, council.
French, let me go back to hours of operation. Uh, the way I read your amendment in here, it says that Monday through Friday, you'll be from four to eight and Saturday and Sunday, you'll be from eight to noon. Is that correct? So there'll be a weekend discharge?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, yes, there, uh, there are operators at the plant at that time, um, just monitoring, um, activity over the weekend.
But a employee of the town to monitor what is being dumped will only be Monday through Friday?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, the, the intent is to have the operators of the treatment facility, uh, do the monitoring, which at this time is CH2M Hill, um, since they're, since they are the operations at present.
But didn't you indicate that they wanted another a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do that?
Uh, yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, they, they would in the event that the hours of operation would be, um, seven AM to seven PM, seven days a week, uh, for the entire year, which would include the weekends and holidays, obviously. So it would take two and a half persons to, to manage that type of operation. And what we're proposing is to just keep it, um, under the current operations of the plant itself.
And so then there would be no additional cost from, from our operator to, to do this monitoring?
Um, that's, that's the idea, Councilmember. Um, again, in the event that there's, there's emergencies, we, we will generate, um, the revenue necessary to go ahead and pay that extra cost in the event that we need to.
Okay. So what insur- what assurances do we have that the operators of the plant will actually check every load that comes in? Or is it going to be, if they see the truck, to go out and do it maybe, or, you know, I, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're really getting the monitoring that we feel is necessary because, let me go back a little bit. Uh, Councilmember Hahn, and the reason that, that we had put that dump site at the yard was, one was because our operators at that time felt that there was too much of a shock to the system dumping right there at the plant. So if you dumped away from the plant, you would then, um, water down in a sense that shock to the plant and that was the reason to move it away from there. That was the only reason that, that, that was done. But I, I think the concern that we've had all along is, is ensuring that, uh, we know it's going into the plant and, uh, and we know how much. So if there are ways of knowing how much is in that truck when it comes by a gauge, we wouldn't need the meter because the person looking at that truck could just say, okay, uh, Mr. Rayle's vehicle came in and, and he had two thousand gallons in the truck according to his meter, that's what went in there and then the location and get a copy of the log. But if nobody's actually doing that unless they, uh, feel like, well, I'm busy right now so I can't go look at that truck, I'll catch the next one. I, I'm just saying, is that kind of, am I kind of on the, uh?
On the track?
On track of what, what is, is the possibility or potential of what may be going on out there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, um, that, that would be a luxury that, that the town of Taos would benefit from, um, i- if, if it were to happen. The reality of it is, is that nobody can stick around the plant just waiting for a truck to come around, um.
No, no, I'm just talking about the normal operations, not, not any other special times of the day or whatever, okay?
Yeah, and so, so during the normal operation or during the normal, normal hours of operation, um, there will be spot checking that is conducted. Um, we, we, um, that, there's a, there's a couple of ways of, of checking that. There are times that we'll get a, a call from a constituent or a property owner or neighbor that has a concern with a septic hauler that says they're, they're pulling a hot load. Um, in that case, what we'll do is we'll notify the plant and have them visually inspect the load. Um, in addition to that, I believe Anthony has, uh, other measures in place that'll notify him that a hot load has been dumped, um, because it'll, it'll simply shock the plant. Um, and, and it could be, even, even if they bypass the, the flow meter and the pH meter, um, the, the, the plant is, is of such a sensitive nature that it'll detect, um, certain contaminants that have been disposed of and, and it'll notify them. Um, it's, it's actually kind of a, an interesting system there's, um, and I think Rick and I kind of had this discussion, uh, an unfortunate discussion the other day. Um, when the telemetry system, uh, senses that there is something incorrect with the plant, it'll notify them, um, on their cell phones. And so when they go out and they start monitoring all of the components of the plant at the headworks, um, they can determine just exactly what, what has shocked the plant. Um, and you, uh, however, I'll let Anthony.
Please, Anthony.
Speak.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, um, we do have some contingencies in terms of monitoring the, the system, but unfortunately, like what Mr. Rayle is saying is, once it's gone into the plant, especially if it's pH balanced, we do have one other test that can help us with, uh, checking that is the connectivity. Does help us, tell us what the kind of a rough estimate of a loading is. But the situation where, what you're talking about, yes, it, it's going to be hard to, to have somebody up there twenty, you know, during the hours of operation. And unfortunately, we don't have the time to, like Mr. Espinoza said, to sit there and wait for every load. Uh, we have our other responsibilities, so it would be a random inspection of, of the trucks and that's it. Uh, especially like on the weekends.
Mr. Mayor?
Normal operations is Monday through Friday. Uh, weekends is the operators there just to maintain the solid inventory. And so they'd be stuck in the belt press and there are times when they're in the belt press working in there, uh, that they wouldn't see if, or trucks that going over there. So it'd be kind of hard for a operator on duty to spot check on the weekends.
French, you know, just one last question, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, is there any way to put in a, a, um, an alarm, and I'm using that word very loosely, just to allow the plant operators to know that a truck came in, period? I mean, not necessarily that they go out and check it, but just if they're doing other things and they can't hear or see, that it tells them by a bell that somebody's come in?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, nothing that comes to mind, however, I will be more than glad to check into that.
Could be done on electric eye that just?
Yeah. Trig- triggers kind of an alarm, sure.
Mr. Peralta, what they have stated here is when they go to the plant, that they check in and the person in the plant follows them. It says it here, to discharge. So it's something that's in the resolution that's, they shouldn't be waiting for somebody to beep or nothing. They're supposed to check with the plant, from the plant there, they take them to the receiving station and, and, and they don't. They're, they're already checking them in there, they should just finish watching them. Uh, just one thing, I'm, I know you guys are tired, but I, I wouldn't wait for the plant to take a shock. I would visually see what's being dumped. If you put that visually seen dump, they're going to be careful on what they're bringing to the plant. That's the only two things I'd say. I wouldn't wait for the plant to take a shock. I would really take care of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Um.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. L, um, by no means is this, I, I appreciate that you came in and talked to myself and the mayor and I appreciate all of the points that you raised. Um, and that's one of the reasons we've taken action on some of those things and that we have this before us tonight. So I don't want you to think that, uh, we're not listening to your concerns. I, I share a lot of those same concerns as does French. But tonight, we're trying to just address one of those things, which is to contain the hours so at least somebody is present at that time. So there's at least a chance that if somebody's going to break the law, that they'll get caught as opposed to, nobody's there at seven o'clock at night or.
Right.
Sunday afternoon. Um, but certainly, we're not done looking at this and I do think that, um, we would not allow open hours at the landfill where just on the honor system, you could back up with your truck and dump whatever you had in there. And tell us what it was later. So we have far more of an investment and a consequence to if the sewer plant goes down. I would like to ask the gentleman from, uh, CH2M Hill. Obviously, your company operates water and sewer treatment facilities all over the country. Is this, are, are we typical for the kind of security or?
Well, I know in my previous project, I can't, I can't remember, I know in Rio Rancho, we didn't accept septic over there. The only thing that we accept, like dumpage from sewer lines is from the Towns Factor. So in Rio Rancho, we don't accept it, they go to Albuquerque. Um, in Grants, where I was previously, we only allowed, and luckily for us over there, we only had like a couple, um, vendors out there and they only dumped when we were, the hours of operation, that was it, nothing on, on the weekends. Now, if there was an emergency where a septic system had failed and it was, uh, spilling on, on the ground, yes, we, we had a very good relationship, especially with the one vendor that we would open up the gate for him to help out him and the customer because of the quality, you know, we don't want the septic flowing out. So locally, we have quite a few of the systems where we don't allow it at the system, at the plant, just because of the possibility of it damaging the plant. And like Councilman Peralta had mentioned, that was one of the reasons why they had brought it into town is just to help, uh, equilibrate the septic loads.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. There is a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Khan too?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
No.
We'll go ahead and move on to then, uh, personal handbook, Mr. Espinoza.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, um, personal handbook that is before you is, is, uh, specific to, uh, the transit division operations. Um, it was put together by, um, Delilah and she referenced a significant amount of material that it exists throughout the state with other, um, with other, uh, transit operations. It was taken to legal counsel for approval. Um, I took a stab at it, however, I'm not a, an attorney, so my, my comments were very, very limited. Um, and we ask you for, for approval to adopt this personal policy specific to the transit operations. Um, it is attached to your agenda item and it's very basic. Um, it would be, uh, handed out to, to any new employees that, um, come and work at the transit division and it will be reviewed with the, um, existing staff on an annual basis. And again, it's, it's very basic and straightforward. Stand for any questions.
Councilor Peralta?
Mr. French, does this handbook, um, mesh with our, our normal town personnel policy? There's no conflicts between the two? Maybe Rick, have you reviewed it in that respect or has our, uh, HR reviewed it in that way?
I believe the council's also reviewed it.
And, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, you know, I, I gave this, uh, as detailed a read as I could, given time constraints, and that's what I was looking for, was areas of conflict with our, uh, general personnel policy and I didn't find any. I have been familiar in the past with other kind of district transit policies and this seems to be fairly standard, uh, in my opinion. And, and to answer your final question, um, HR has reviewed it, again, not perhaps in, uh, complete detail at this point, we kind of sprung it on HR yesterday, so, uh, but I, I don't think there's any problem with it and if there is, we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, I, I would say it functions more as an instructional, instructional handbook than it really does a personnel policy.
That's the way I looked at it.
Most of the general labor issues are addressed by the personnel policy exclusive of this.
Move for approval. We have a motion of second.
Second.
And a second, further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Khan too?
Yes.
Thank you. French, you're on the hot seat tonight. Tipping fee rate increase at the Taos Regional Landfill?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll field that one.
Okay.
We wanted to get this on there here because, uh, there was some urgency in the sense that the landfill board had, uh, approved a rate structure, um, and certainly since we're the fiscal agent, we have an interest in seeing that we don't run out of money by the end of the year. Uh, we, we're fully in support of it. Uh, Councilman Hahn voted for it, uh, in representing the town. Um, however, I'm going to ask that it be tabled tonight, uh, for one reason and that is that we have of all the partners, a, a more complicated structure because we have residential and commercial rates and we have contract through a commercial hauler. In the case of the, some of the other jurisdictions, it's, it's a little simpler and we were hoping, we anticipated that the consultant that did this study would have the final impact for us on the commercial rates and, uh, uh, my hats off to Marietta that she picked up that the way it's proposed now, um, typically, the larger increase or the larger cost is borne by the commercial, not the residential, and this treats them evenly. And so that revolts, results in a larger disproportionate increase to the residential rate pair. And we've asked for those figures to be adjusted accordingly, uh, but unfortunately, they don't have them available to us at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that was my question. It's what I didn't see in here was the commercial rate. And so you've answered that question for me, thank you.
Do we have a motion to table? So move.
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Discussion?
No discussion on table.
Briefly, Mr. Bellis?
There's no discussion on a table motion. There's no discussion on a table motion.
There's no discussion on a table?
Yeah, 'cause we're not moving on it, we're gonna table it to make speed.
Okay.
If it doesn't pass, then you can have your discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Okay. So then we'll, if you might get with Rick or French. So go on to item F, Town Hall Drive Construction Award, Mr. Espinosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Caldwell.
Uh, members of the council, as you're aware, the governing body of the Town of Taos entered into an MOU with the Taos Municipal Schools, and where they partnered up to construct Monsanada's Drive and Town Hall Drive, and the municipal schools are the lead agency in this, on this project. When it was bid out, it was bid out as a base bid for the municipal schools, and an alternate bid for the Town of Taos's portion. There were two respective bidders that submitted, both local, and both did meet all the requirements of the bid, and both bids did check out. However, awarding to the lowest, or to the low bid, is what the municipal schools lobbied for. So in that case, the low bid of 190,0023 plus GRT of 15,574 brings a total amount of 205,797 to be awarded to Silva's excavation for the construction of Town Hall Drive. And I move for your approval. I did negotiate with the contractor to bring it within budget, and we did delete a couple of items as well to make it a reality. And we have a contingency now of about $2,300 to cover any oversights that may occur during construction. And again, I look for your approval to award.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, this would be a question, I think, for legal and Marietta, at the same time. Being that this is a formal council member, are any of these funds coming out of DFA? Nothing? We meet the...what I'm looking for is just that we meet the statutory with regards to an elected official and the one-year clause.
They're not DFA funds, they're co-op, part of them are co-op funds, and our own local funds. That's what I know on the funding side.
What about on the school board side?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I don't know the answer on the school board side. I don't know that...I presume, councilmember, you're referring to the Governmental Conduct Act, which prohibits an elected official from being, contracting with a local governmental entity, if that official participated in the project during his tenure, and...
Well, I think if you take it, I mean, if you can read into the statute, it takes it a step further in regards to even the lobbying fact, which is still part of the governmental conduct. And I'm not trying to derail the project, just I wanna make sure that we're protected, or that we're not midstream through this and get slapped for it.
I certainly appreciate your concern. Maybe the best way to approach this is by talking us through the source of funding? I mean, that's really the crux here.
You get the other hot seat.
So part of the match is the co-op, which comes from the Department of Transportation. Depending on where that award was made, I guess we'd have to go back and look, but I think that's just their, and their pot of money that they give to the local municipalities. And French, may I have more?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that pot of money is what they refer to as their local government fund, and it's divvied up amongst however many municipalities within the state, or, I'm sorry, within District Five. Our award for this project is in the amount of $43,321. The balance of that comes from the Town of Taos coffers.
Which is capital funding through our capital GRT.
Mr. Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake, but I believe it doesn't make any difference where the money comes from, whether it's state money or local money. I think what the councilmember Gonzalez is talking about is the Conduct Act that says you can't contract with an entity that you were an official with for one period after you're no longer there.
Right.
And so that's the question, is are we in violation of that Conduct Act, or is the contractor in violation of that Conduct?
And I'm sure council is looking at it right now, and that was one of the questions I just came about, and I don't know if it's because it was an advertised bid process, so I guess maybe not, I don't know.
This is making a...
So, I can't answer that.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the way the Governmental Conduct Act reads is that a local government agency shall not enter into a contract with, or take any action favorably affecting any person or business that assisted in the tran...is assisted in the transaction by a former public officer or employee. And I think certainly, being a principal, is consistent with that. And this is with regard to an award that directly resulted from an act that that person participated in as part of his service. So it's not as straightforward as you're prohibited from contracting with that agency for a year, it's you're prohibited in contracting with that agency for a year if it is an award that results from something that you did while you were in office during the preceding year.
On that basis, would then councilmember Silva, in our discussions and work with the schools, to preliminarily approve this project back in the fall of 2013, affect that regard or not?
Um, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, you know, it's, I would say it certainly raises a red flag to me. If councilmember Silva, at the time, made decisions that forwarded this project in any way, in such a way that it led to this ultimate award, then I think we should be very cautious.
Would this ding us on a future audit, with regards to that?
Um, more than likely, probably, if, and it's disposed already, so, based on whatever Jacob decides.
Jake, did you need some time to?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, you know...
Form an opinion?
Yes, I think that it would be...
Would it hurt anything if we tabled this to our next meeting?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's a timeline to this construction project that's important to try to keep up with what the schools are doing. But I don't see a better choice than to table it for the time being. You know, if we can get it back to you in the form of a special meeting, perhaps, and you would be willing to accommodate that, I don't have a...I don't have the ability to suggest that this is all good to go, on the basis that councilmember Silva, at the time, may have participated in this project.
So council, with that heard, what's, we have a motion?
I have a question.
Please.
I was curious, what publications were the RFPs published in?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cantu, the bid was advertised in the Taos News and on the Town of Taos website.
The Town of Taos website?
Yes.
Wasn't put in...okay, well, I guess that means it wasn't in Santa Fe, or Albuquerque, or anyplace else.
It was advertised, I believe, Mr. Mayor, where we are legally bound to advertise, right?
Yes, according to... Does it show, do we have the capability of seeing how many hits we had for that publication on the town website?
Um, if it's, and let me clarify what French just said, because the advertisement was done actually by the schools, through Doug Patterson. So we did advertise through the Taos News. I don't think we had it on our website, just to clarify it, no. I don't think we had it on the website, but we do, if people go into the website and request a set of plans in spec for the town side, we do keep track of that information.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, do you wanna elaborate a little bit on that?
So this bid was advertised in the Taos News, and the procurement was, the procurement was run under the guidance of Taos Municipal Schools. So the project was advertised in the Taos News. There was a mandatory pre-bid meeting on the site, meaning that only people who showed up at that meeting were allowed to bid on the project. And I don't have that list with me, but I think we had six attendees to that mandatory pre-bid meeting.
In the last meeting. I believe it was four that you said.
I think there were four companies, but I think there were multiple attendees from Northern Mountain Contractors.
Subcontractors.
Subcontractors as well, yeah. I can't state, I can't be, I can't state for sure, but I'm sure we can go back and see. I'm pretty sure that Councilman Silva recused himself from voting on this project when we did the prior approval in August. But I'd have to, somebody would have to verify that for us in the record. I don't, I don't think so. You don't think so? No.
But Jake, if you could get us a...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please. This was all looked at originally, prior to his decision not to run. Okay, so that's why I'm saying I feel that he did, but I don't know whether that preliminary discussion and agreement to move forward really contemplates the, what we're talking about now. So an exclusion from what we're talking about now. I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question, 'cause that's all it was at that time. It wasn't approval of the project, it was approval of the concept, and to work with the schools to make it happen. And then it wasn't till, you know, when you came to us the last time and said it's ready to go to bid, that the actual decision by the town was formalized. But there was, you know, conditional approvals back then, so that's all I'm asking the question. If that doesn't constitute an actual approval and budget of the project, then I don't, I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question.
And, and Mr. Mayor and councilmember Peralta, you know, I just, not knowing the exact history of that chain of events, it would be hard for me to speculate. It does take, there has to be a nexus between an official act, as a public official, that in turn leads to the award of contract as a former public official. And whether that nexus exists here or not, is gonna take a little bit of research, that I'm not really capable of doing in the time period of this meeting. There are a couple of options, you could table, you could continue this item, and on the hopes that I can provide you a solid answer in order to make a decision. Now, I fear that I'm only going to be able to provide you an opinion, that is not necessarily black or white, but I will do my best.
Okay. If we decided to continue, we'd have to do it time-specific, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
I think it'd be better if we tabled, when we need to, we can have a special meeting. Council?
So which is the council?
I just have a question for Mr. Patterson. So what is our lead time here, Douglas? I know we're pushing at schools.
Uh, Mayor and Councilman Han, we'd like to go to construction on May 27th, which is two weeks from today. We have a very short window to complete construction before school gets back in session. So this is our last approval in this, in this line of getting this project underway. If we do choose to table it, I would hope that the council would be able to bring it up again very soon, within the next week.
How do you feel about that timeframe, Mr. Caldwell?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmember Han, the timeframe is not the concern for purposes of conducting the research and issuing an opinion. I think a week is fine.
Uh, French, I had asked a question about the dirt road, providing that this project moves forward, and I just wanted to thank you for researching that dirt road that goes from the Library Office of Alverde, and appreciate your getting in touch with me on that. French and I talked about that road, and if there are traffic issues, we're gonna deal with it at that time. Right now, he does not feel that there will be, but we'll keep an eye on it. So fellow councilmembers, if you, as we move forward, if we are getting concerns from our citizens, let's bring it back so we can deal with it. French, thank you for doing that.
So what's the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I guess then I would make a motion that we move to table this item.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilperalta?
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion?
There's no discussion.
Oh, no discussion, that's correct.
I was gonna amend the motion, but...
Oh, amend the motion.
I would just like to amend the motion to table to the call of the chair. So whenever you're ready, Jake, the mayor can call a special meeting back, call us back for a special meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we get any more tables, we'll have a furniture store starting.
That's what we're going for.
Call for the vote. Oh, did you guys wanna amend the motion?
So I'll amend to that, yeah. I'll amend my motion with his, with her.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion with that amendment, and a second, friendly second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you. So go on to grant agreement for Taos County, please. On, on the...
The roadway construction project?
Tabled. We tabled it, so...
I'll be at the special meeting to ask Mr. Espinosa what the viable level of service calculation is as required by the town.
Okay. Got that. Thank you. So go on to grant agreement for Taos County Juvenile Justice Program. Mr. Ramble, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to roll him out of the way.
French, are you bidding on this project, too?
Get him out.
Do you want me to go ahead, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, town manager, I'm sorry? This item is a grant agreement for the Taos County Juvenile Justice Program. It's a consideration approval. The grant number is stated in there in the amount of $133,302. This comes from the state of New Mexico Children's Youth Infamy's Department, for the operation of Taos County Juvenile Justice Program. I have here the coordinator, Carol Miraball, and just to go a little bit of what the program does and what this grant covers. We are the fiscal agent, we run this grant through, in the Finance Department, through the Grants Administrator. We do the procurement, we do the reimbursements, we oversee it on the side of the town for the fiscal agent, and I will just let her just give you a little history of what is part of this juvenile justice grant.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, town manager, the Taos County Juvenile Justice Board has been around since 2004. It started after a really violent summer. There were the Mustang killings, there were a lot of youth that died in our community, and there was an opportunity for funding available through the federal government. And so we started a continuum board, which is the Taos Juvenile Justice Board. And at that time, we decided that part of what we were charged with was, is looking at gaps in service in our community, so there would be a continuum of services, from prevention all the way to when a child is released from the facilities in, the juvenile facilities in Albuquerque. So we do, the five programs that we do are, we do restorative justice circles... So, we do, um, the five programs that we do are, um, we do restorative justice circles. We do intensive community monitoring of young people who are released from detention before their court hearing. We do, uh, a learning lab, or, we actually contract with, uh, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. They do a learning lab for middle school students that are at risk of being expelled from school, or they're just so truant that they're not gonna be able to make it. And the learning lab uses a lot of community service learning as part of their, um, operation. We also do Girl Circle in the middle school and at Vista Grande High School, and that's a gender-specific program. Because what works for boys doesn't necessarily work for girls. And we do a gang prevention program called GRIP. Um, gang, gang prevention is powerful. And that's because, um, a lot of the criminal, um, activities in our community are driven by gangs. And it's much easier to do prevention than it is to interviewing once kids are, um, already in gangs. So, those are kind of the activities we do. We get our funding through CYFD, and it's part of a law that was written into the legislature. And the law states, uh, what the makeup of our board is, and the law also states that we have to go through a unit of government. Any questions?
I just, I do have a couple. Um, who, who does the monitoring, like, for the ICM, the learning lab, the nonviolence work, the Girl Circle? Is there monitoring? I guess since you allocate the funds, you'd actually do some monitoring and, and actually give an, an idea of how many, uh, kids are treated or, or go through the different organizations?
Okay, um, I do some program monitoring, but CYFD does a lot more. And also J-Jack, which is the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, also monitors the programs. The, um, ICM normally runs about twenty kids, um, per year. Last year, we haven't seen as many because we're not getting as many referrals from law enforcement. And, um, the restorative justice, it's about the same, twenty kids. The Learning Lab is kind of small. It only serves eight kids per, some, eight kids per year, but they try and do it each semester, so it's about sixteen. Um, GRIP goes into the second grade and the fifth grade at Inos Garcia and Rancho's. I'm forgetting. Oh, Girl Circle. Girl Circle, um, serves about, um, they run several groups, and I think they probably serve about twenty-five girls.
Councilor Peralta?
My question, uh, goes to procurement. You're, you are established under a law of the state of New Mexico, is that correct, your board? And you're a paid board or a volunteer board?
Uh, we're, it's an advisory board, so it's a volunteer board, but the law specifies who has to be on the board.
Okay, so, the expenditure of the funds that are allocated by the legislature, for example, the contract you have with, um, the Mount, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. How does that meet procurement? Are they a sole source, or, or is that one that is put out for bids every year?
I'll answer that because, uh, we've done a proposal for all of the services that were contracted right now, and it was for a three-year, a three-year term. So, we've done proposals on all of the, all of the, the, the different programs that she has. So, we've done the procurement in the finance department for that.
Okay, so you've done the posting for the services and then awarding of the contracts?
Yes, yes. And, uh, when we did that original proposal, it was for good for three years, and I think this is gonna be the last year, so we'll have to redo if we continue getting the funds for the program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, counselor?
Ms. Miraball, I wanna thank you for your leadership on that board. Um, I've served in a number of capacities with it. And it's vital to our community. We have fifteen gangs, two hundred people involved, most adolescents. So, the services your board provides are essential, and I'm very grateful. I'm also gonna have to recuse myself from vote as I sit on this board, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
But I totally support him.
Maryetta, would we then see a, um, a budget creation, or, or we already have that?
We, we have that in the community. When I presented the capital and community grants, we will change this, change the figure. We had a hundred and thirty-four thousand, we weren't sure of the amount, so we'll just change the figure on that, but it's already a budgeted for next year's, um, budget.
Okay. What's the wishes of the council?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, we have-
I'll second that.
And a second, any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Recused.
So, go to item H, renewal-
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you. We appreciate it for the services you bring to our community, we truly do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our kids are really important. So, H, renewal of Cardenas Field Lease Agreement? Mr. Caldwell?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is, um, a kind of funny structured agreement between, it's kind of a three-party agreement, really. Uh, because it's, the Cardenas baseball field is a, the high school baseball field owned by the schools, um, which in turn, last year, entered into a license agreement with the town. Enabling the town to in turn enter into a lease with the Pecos League, which is a minor league baseball team or league. And I actually can't say that I know every detail of the history of that transaction, but as I understand it, it was structured that way out of necessity in order to, in order for the Pecos League to in turn be able to sell concessions at the baseball games, particularly including alcohol. This came to my attention sort of as a last-minute item. The current structured license agreement and companion lease agreement, uh, well, the, the lease agreement component of that expires on the fifteenth of May. As I understand it, the, the league is, uh, all ramped up and ready to go. I spoke to the school superintendent today, and he said, um, that the school is fully supportive of a renewal of the lease. And, uh, is willing to treat the license agreement as it stands as valid and in play. The school has made no overtures towards terminating the licensing agreement. So, what is presented to you today is essentially a one-year extension of the lease, which was provided for under last year's lease, uh, at the option of the league. As far as I can tell, the league is sort of reaching its point of organizational capacity right now, so that they're able to deal with renewing this lease. They, they were supposed to have given us notice of their desire to renew the lease, or, or renew their option on the lease, uh, a couple of months ago, but as I understand it, that didn't happen. So, we're kind of being placed between a, a little bit of a rock and a hard place to, um, get something in place to allow them to start playing games, um, as of when their lease expires, which is the fifteenth.
Councilor Peralta?
Jake, I, I just have a question concerning the sale of alcohol. I, I don't see in the lease or the license, or maybe I'm reading it wrong, that there is a, a provision allowing us to, uh, lease this property to a third party that, and give them the right to vend alcohol in there, which is in violation of the school's no alcohol, no drugs, uh, on their premises.
And Mayor and Councilor Peralta, you know, that's, there's certainly nothing explicit in either of these agreements. There is a provision in, in the lease that gives the lessee, the league, the right to, uh, govern their own concessions. The only reason I mention the alcohol sales is because that's what has been told to me was the driving cause of this sort of protracted relationship.
And that was my understanding, too, and when we did this last year. However, I just don't see the, uh, provision for, for alcohol, which to me is a separate sort of thing than any other kind of concession. Uh, and, and who is providing the alcohol this year? Do you know?
Says a vendor.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, um, I'm inclined to defer to Renee on that. As I understand it, several, uh, dispensers have come in for specials, dispenser permits in order to facilitate those sales.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, they're actually special, not special dispenser permits, they're public celebration permits. So, they're permits from breweries or wineries. Um, and I actually have, uh, access to the file. I can look it up real quick if you wanna know who the, who will be dispensing.
So, there are different-
I signed off on about a month ago.
There are different vendors who have applied for a permit?
Yes. I believe so. Um, but I can look real quick if you'd like. I know Taos Mesa Brewery was definitely one of them, if not maybe the only one, but I can check real quick.
And, and counselor, under item nine, uh, exclusive rights of the league, in this contract, it does spell out beer.
I understand that, but on our side, with the lease coming to us from the schools-
Right.
It doesn't say that we can turn around and, and re-lease this property, uh, with alcohol sales. And I'm just saying because there is a policy that the schools have of no alcohol or drugs on school property. And so, there's no waiver of that, as I can see it in the lease that's given to us from the schools. And, and that's my concern, is that somebody could bring this up in the future. I don't have any problem with the alcohol there, I just wanna make sure that we have our, our ducks in in order to, to do this project, because I think it's important. I think it's a good, uh, driver of, of sports and, uh, and potential economic development within this community, but I wanted to make sure we're doing it right.
And Mr. Mayor and, and councilmembers, I, fortunately, I don't have a whole lot to add. The, the license, you know, it's not structured as a lease, sublease, it's structured as a license, which carries with it all rights set forth in the licensing agreement. Many of which are vague and not explicit, but, um, I, I'm, this is conjecture on my part. I'm guessing that the school was reluctant to be explicit last year at this time. But somehow kind of designed this mechanism, uh, with some assurance that this was gonna be good enough. I would be happy to, very happy to revisit this. Uh, I just wanna make sure it's clear to the, this council that doing so, that places this already somewhat tenuous structure completely out of contract. And I don't know where the baseball league goes if that happens.
Uh, counselor?
Chief, if I could maybe defer to you on this one. Being that we had this lease engaged last year, was there any incident with regards to alcohol sales at the baseball field last year? I didn't hear of any, so I'm assuming no, but.
Counselor Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen, I, I know of no, um, no incident that happened at the Bellville, this room.
Now, um, the other thing I can suggest, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is that it's my understanding that the superintendent was bringing this item to the school board tonight. And so, we could, I, I could ask for your approval of the lease, conditioned on some affirmative statement from the schools that acknowledges their understanding that alcohol will be sold, um, as a result of this lease agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval based on that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second based on that. Oh, any discussion? Not call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Thank you, Jake. Well, a lease agreement between the town of Taos and the area agi, agency on aging, Mr. Caldwell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is a proposed lease for a very small, uh, amount of space in the old town police department building at one oh seven Civic Plaza Drive. Uh, the square footage is approximately a hundred and twenty square feet of office, office space, um, plus, uh, the right of ingress and egress through the lobby and access to the bathrooms. Once again, this is, I apologize, um, that this seems rushed. The, the area agency on aging is desirous of making this move as soon as possible. And by that, I mean by May fifteenth. Now, the, the town has taken, from what I can tell, a sort of varied approach to leases of its property. And it seems to fluctuate depending on, uh, administration and legal counsel, and it's something I'd really like to tighten up. We, we seem to get into a habit of being forced into these things and rushed into them, and this is not an exception to that. But, um, in an ideal world, we would have had the opportunity to fully assess the value of this property and to, uh, equate a fair market value that we then are assured is being paid. Now, in this case, this, the agency that we're leasing to is another governmental entity, so a lot of that, um, can be justified. And I'm comfortable going forward. Now, I, I just wanna make it clear that that's not my preference going forward. I also, you know, I, I kind of drafted this lease in order to get it on the agenda. It's, it's drafted as a one-year lease with one full fiscal year plus the remainder of this fiscal year. So, one year plus a little bit, um, with standard kind of boilerplate lease language and termination rights. Um, the, incidentally, the Aryan Agency on Aging is the entity that currently leases space from Ancianos at our Ancianos building. And they, this is the same amount they're paying there, uh, six hundred dollars a month, and as I understand it, this is just what they're able to pay, period.
Councilor Peralta?
Jake, is it your understanding that, that they will pay all utilities? That's what this lease says, what I'm saying. Wasn't there a, a discussion that somebody else would take up some of the other space in there, Rick?
Mayor Councilman, that's correct. And the original offer, uh, um, the county wished to put the teen court and DWI staff over there to take the balance of the space other than the E-nine-one-one area. Which at that time seemed to make sense that, yeah, between the two of them, economically, they would cover all the, the, uh, utilities. I, I find it a less desirable relationship now that the county's sort of backed out of that, and we're using part of the building. Both from the sense of the utilities and probably being unfair to someone that's using such a small amount of space to have to carry that. Uh, and then also in that it appears now that there is no plan to use that as a redundant facility for the nine-one-one. Which, again, that would have been the third part and a good reason to keep the building active and heated. You know, if we can help the AAA out for a year or at least, um, until the, um, their situation is resolved over at the other Ancianos building. I know that one of the reasons they need to get out of there is because of, uh, the mold remediation. So, I would not have a problem with putting the clause in here that made this, uh, a, a shorter-term lease. And, uh, attaching it to whatever the conditions are that get resolved with the county, because it's, and perhaps the mayor, in being a, a county commissioner, can shed a little more light on this. But, uh, negotiations between the county and the AAA seem to have come to a halt, and the county rightly saying, you know, we're not taking on all this baggage till you clean up what's going on now. So if that doesn't go forward, I don't think it would make much sense for us to be tied in with a lease, to have to accommodate AAA going forward for this building when we might have other uses for it.
But my question was that, you know, if you're using, you know, one-sixth of the building, but you're responsible for 100% of the utilities, are they willing to pay that? So that's the only question. If they're willing to pay it, so be it.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, as written, they are required to pay all utilities that they use exclusively. Now, probably for purpose, in terms of more artful drafting, I should expand on that to allow for sharing of utilities to the extent we're able to monitor how those utilities are being used by different parties. But under the limited ability to do so, if they're the only occupant, then they're going to share all the utilities. Now, there is a question about whether there's separate meters, which I think we couldn't possibly interpret this lease to require that they pay utilities for our radios if they're separately metered. And I'm not concerned about that, but I would be happy to clarify that at the wishes of the council. The other thing I'll throw out as an option in light of what Rick said was that we could propose a month-to-month lease as an opportunity for them to get out of where they are and to sort of cultivate a relationship with the town without the town committing to a full year.
You know, I'm not asking for any commitment. I guess I was looking at it from the standpoint of if I was leasing this building, would I sign a lease that says, "I'm taking X number of spaces in here, but you want me to pay for the empty spaces as well?" And I understand that they can't live there unless there's utilities being paid. I'm just questioning whether or not they may come back and says, "Wait a minute. We'll pay $600 a month, but we'll only pay one-sixth of the utility costs of that building." Now, is that basically saying that we're going to, the $600 a month they're going to give us is just going to pay for the utilities in that building for them to be there?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the reality of it is until January 1st, we've got to maintain the electric and heat the building, which we're not going to have to do over summer, obviously, here. So their usage, and I know you've been over to the Ancianos building, their usage with basically two computers and two ladies sitting there is going to be really nominal compared to what we have to put into the building to keep 911 going till January 1st. Certainly, if we pull out of there after that, you know, it becomes a different story. We don't want to be heating the whole building in January for two ladies sitting in 100 and something square feet. And that was why my proposal to say that we do a month-to-month, with a 30-day out by either party. That would give, for the rest of the summer into the early fall, it's not going to be a concern to us, you know. In theory, you could give them the space, you know, for nothing. But that, certainly the mold remediation will be done by then, and I think the county will have an answer on the other issue.
And councillor, you know, in being part of those meetings, there is emergency funding that has been allocated presently, and they are moving forward with the mold remediation. And they've assured us that when it is handed over to the county, that there will be, it'll be, start from a clean slate. And so no more than, I believe, no more than six months, unless they really find that they need the extra space, then they probably want to come back to the town for a longer-term lease.
And I might add, Mayor, if we're going to be in a position of conveying that building over to the county so that they can complete those renovations, there's no reason we couldn't make that condition clear that since in the past they've housed AAA, that they have to accept them back over as a condition of getting the building.
Well, you know, my situation is if AAA is willing to pay the utilities, I don't care. My question is whether they'll come back to and say, "Wait a minute."
And Mr. Mayor, I've just been, you know, referred to artful drafting, and in fact, there's a very vague permission here that says that they're solely responsible for utilities in an amount proportionate to their use. So they could quite easily say-
Dirty bucks?
They're not using 100% of the utilities that are associated with it all. So I think they're kind of covered. I'm sure they're a little more clear about that.
Mr. Mayor, and Rick and Jacob, what is the asbestos situation over there?
Mr. Mayor and council members, as I understand it, there's one room that's not part of this lease, but not one of the rooms that's being leased to AAA, that has contained asbestos below the tiles. That if not, the asbestos report indicates that as long as there's tiles not disturbed, there's no issue of airborne asbestos. So does anyone have any different?
Well, my understanding that there's asbestos in the building, but it's all underneath the carpet, so it's all contained. So unless you would disturb the carpet, there's no issue.
And we did review on a walk-through tour with AAA, the engineering report that was done earlier, and councilmen and legal counsel are correct, that the report said it was involved in the mastik that held the tiles to the floor, and as long as it was covered over, and we didn't go digging up the tiles, we wouldn't have any problem whatsoever.
Thank you. Any further? What's the wishes of the council?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
You have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to, you had suggested in your language that you wanted to either put a limit of six months on this lease, or consider a month-to-month provision?
I don't have a, I'd rather either way. I think the way it's written is fine. I think we can... Unless, Rick, you?
Well, I'll defer to council, but again, I'm not looking for a one-year tenant on this, or going into the winter having to heat the building.
What are you deferring to me to say?
We'd rather have a six-month lease, no more than six months on a month-to-month.
Oh, well, you know, I think that we can propose whatever we want. And I think that they probably really want to move right now. So if, I mean, I think it would be fair to give some assurance if we propose a month-to-month lease, that we'd like to revisit this as matters unfold with regard to the county. But I think a month-to-month lease, given the unknowns, would be appropriate.
So in that motion, could we amend that motion?
Amend the motion to go to month-to-month?
Second?
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So go ahead, MJ. Comnet antenna proposal? Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, that furniture star is getting a good start here. We're going to, we're going to table this one and arrange for them to make a presentation to you. Just to very quickly give you some background on this, and because you may not be interested at all, Comnet has proposed that they would like to replace the antenna, originally it was to use the antenna, but to replace the antenna at the police station with a 100-foot tower, as opposed to 75-foot there currently, in order to get better signal down into the historic area, particularly the plaza, for 4G and phone service. And as an alternate to that, they're proposing that they could put the tower over here at the town complex. And there's an initial, first year, first and second year, while they recover their costs, there's just a nominal payment. But they're willing to, proposing a $3500 to $3800 fee annually to the town for doing that. The reason I want them to make that presentation is it's, it is the historic district, and you are going to have people who are going to look at it. They proposed a solid metal tower, which they actually gave us some Photoshop pictures of, which is pretty intrusive. We have asked them to come back with an alternate plan for a lattice tower, which would be less visible and look like the one we have now. Or if you look at the one at the county, you know, it's, kind of blends in to the sky. But I would request that they be scheduled for a presentation to you at the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I was really, I don't think we should pay them anything. But if we're going to dispose of that building at some point in time, the old police department, it would be foolish to put a new tower there. And if there's anything that we would need a tower for in the future, it would be nice to have it located next to where our facilities that are being used are. And that's what I would, would say, that, you know, that put it over here, next to our town hall in the back. But, you know, it should be made in such a way that it becomes least visible possible. But I think that for future use, or potential use by the town, it would be better there than in a building that may come down in the next couple of years or be sold off to somebody else. And that tower isn't, isn't in the greatest place in the world right now for utility. That's just my feeling.
And Mr. Bellis, you alluded to that they would be contributing then to the town's coffers after a two-year reprieve from...
That is the proposal, and obviously that sum is negotiable, and they seem rather eager, so I would guess that we could probably get more than that from them. And of course, put in the requirement, as we always did at the county, that the town or any public safety agency retain the ability to hang whatever equipment is necessary on there, and for educational purposes, should UIM or anyone else desire to use it.
Our library?
The library?
Okay. So with that said, and with the request from Mr. Bellis to table, we have a motion from the council?
So I'll move table.
I'll second that.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
So item K, resolution 1424, adoption of the 2013 Taos Economic Development Action Plan. Ms. Martha Perkins?
Mayor, councillors, I believe that you have the resolution in front of you. What I'm proposing is that we adopt the 2013 Taos Economic Development Action Plan, as it's a call to action. Lead partners did this plan. They presented their data and graphs at the first joint town-county meeting, and they really urged both entities to make a difference and do something regionally as far as economic development. We are not in a position right now to update the economic development ordinance, as we need to take that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then, you know, do the noticing, the 15-day notice period for that, as well as then take it to the council for your approval. So I'm suggesting that we go ahead and we adopt this resolution, so that we put forward that we did listen to that report. We do feel that there is a need for us to work regionally on economic development and make it happen here locally, and by acknowledging it with a resolution. We are in the process of updating the 2010 interim county development strategic plan, which is the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. We need to have that in place for our local economic development ordinance. In June 2011, I believe, the council passed another ordinance keeping that interim 2010 community development strategic plan, economic development element of the comp plan in place. So it is effective now. We can continue to use it for any LITA grant applications that may come before us. And so what I'm requesting is your approval of this resolution tonight.
Martha, does this go back at all to, you know, at the time this was presented, I know there was a grant to, it was allocated for a grant that we received, and was part of that grant that if we adopted this, we'd get reimbursed, or?
Yes. The New Mexico Economic Development Department has reviewed the plan. What they need is your adoption of the plan before we receive the funds.
Mr. Mayor, I might also add that there's a number of the recommendations in here that we've already started on. So it'd be nice, when we go back for more money later, to show that we're actually taking action. For example, it talks about the need to consolidate as a region, your marketing efforts and your tourism efforts, and that's a subject that came up at the joint town-county meeting, and that the county has already reflected an interest in participating in. And this, adopting this, would allow us on a number of those initiatives to be, including support of the airport, to be able to approach the other entities in the county and ask for their financial support and strategic support going forward.
Council, questions, comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I've seen economic development plans come and go. This one's got to work. So I'm with you, Martha.
That is a form of a motion, council?
So I'd like to move that we approve resolution 14-24.
We do have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Not called for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you, so, thank you. So we go to local economic development plan update, Mr. Bellis and Martha, Ms. Martha Perkins?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have anything for action tonight on this, but what we did want to do is inform council, because I know particularly Councilman Peralta is concerned that we move ahead on this project. We have developed a scoring system. We are, the council is examining the LITA ordinance. We are waiting response on one point, and unfortunately, I should ask French to stay, and that is to make sure that doing this project in no way violates our agreement with NMED in regards to the nitrate monitoring on that site. And so as soon as we have an answer on that, we'll get this back in front of you, and I know Martha and Jake have been working on it. Either of you have anything to add?
No. You need to actually approve a public participation agreement, and so there'll be terms in there. The idea behind LITA is to encourage local economic development, but at the same time safeguard the public's money. So we have to balance those two, as far as an agreement and do an annual review. I have been involved where we have pulled back money that we have given to a business before in another community. And so that's, that's not something that a municipality wants to do, but on the other hand, it's, it's good to have that protection there.
In this case, though, there's no money. This is strictly on land lease.
Right, exactly. So every project's different, though, is what I'm trying to say. So they all have their own agreements, and, you know, we need to safeguard what we can as far as the public's concerned. And in this case, they're asking for land to write and the use of wastewater and recyclable materials, so...
Mr. Mayor, I think the good, Councilman, I think the good news in this, despite the delay, and I know it has been a long time in getting this done, is that we are addressing, developing a system for handling these applications on a quicker, fairer basis for scoring and evaluation and getting them to you, because we know there's also a couple of projects right behind this that people have asked about, town properties also. right behind this that people have asked about, town properties also, that, all of them are pretty exciting projects, so hopefully we can get to these very quickly.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Jake, did you have anything to add?
Not, not really, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just to recap that, to the extent we have a LIDA Act ordinance, it dates back really to two thousand, and it needs to be updated. And the interim solution that was created in the form of the two thousand ten ordinance really does, only incorporates the two thousand ordinance for purposes of being able to assess a proposed plan for purposes of presenting a project partnership agreement. And so, you know, we've kinda spent equal times trying to review this one application, realizing that what we really need to do is review the process and make it more streamlined and easier for everyone, and to give you as the ultimate decision-makers a better basis to ultimately enter into these agreements and understand what our plan says in terms of priorities for type of project, for type of qualifying entity, and how we're gonna score those things. So I know it's frustrating, but we're working on it.
Yeah, okay. And I might also mention that to add to the complication of all that, and to only have to do it once in revising the LIDA, we're also trying to accommodate what the Economic Development Department is looking for in the Main Street and Arts and Cultural District, LIDA also.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Not, we'll go move on to the lease agreement for the John Donne parking lot? Thank you, Martha.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I wanna thank Scott Sanger for coming and hanging out. Scott's the attorney for Ann Brenner. Ann Brenner's the owner of a little less than half of the John Donne parking lot that is being used currently for parking. That lease expires on May thirty-first. Ms. Brenner, whose name I spelled wrong in what is in your agenda packet, it has an E at the end of it, A N N E. Ms. Brenner through Scott has proposed a one-year extension of that lease under all terms of the existing lease. And editorializing a little bit, I, I think we really need to figure out what we're doing about things like parking lots during that year, but.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor?
Um, Jake, the seventeen hundred dollars, is that every three months? Is that a quarterly? Yeah?
Uh, paid quarterly.
Okay. So I guess again, just with this directive to the council, and we've seen where our budget is going, I know we were tasked last year with the hard decision of what do we do with parking? Increasing parking meter fees, moving hours around, and I know it became a pretty pretentious issue, and I guess now that we've moved parking meter fees back down, I would ask that maybe we take a look and see what if any impact that was, because at the time, I, I as one counselor felt that it was more an economically driven decline in, in revenues, more than it was the actual fact that we instituted a higher rate. As I've always said, you know, in, anywhere that I've ever traveled, we are accustomed to paying for parking, especially within close proximity to the downtown area. So, I mean, as, as I look at budgets and I look at what we pay out in terms of leases, like, I guess for myself, I wanna also look at how we, again, I don't, I don't look at the city as a money-making enterprise, but we need to cover the basic overhead costs of what it costs us to lease. So now I think would be a good time, I, I don't know where business has been within the, within the downtown district, but whether or not the, moving back the parking meter fees has made a significant impact, and if it has, to what tune? So that's one thing I know is gonna continue to come back up, and it's gonna be an ever-revolving door as long as we still continue to pay a lease to anybody, be it Guadalupe, be it Ms. Brenner. I just think it's something that, that we need to consider as we face the budget issues that we do. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I, I just wanna make sure that I understood your question, Councilmember Gonzalez, that the lease rate is seventeen hundred dollars per month?
Per month?
That's correct.
Then that significantly changes the forecast.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gonzalez, I know that Councilwoman Kuntu and Councilman Peralta share your concerns about the parking as to the mayor and I. The current situation, as you saw in the budget, is that fifty to sixty percent of everything we thought we'd have available for the historic district is eaten up by just the leases to have somewhere for people to park. And we, we can't go on that way. We need to find a solution. And I, I wish that when Councilman Peralta was mayor and had a plan for how to solve that, you know, in retrospect, had we done that, we wouldn't be where we are today, and we'd be spending that money fixing up the plaza.
Yep.
But I have a feeling if we wait another five, ten years, it's not gonna get any better, so certainly we wanna take a look at that and come back to you with some serious solutions. And, and I, I think that's a wonderful idea that you suggested. We're starting to do that with our, our marketing and other things to say, you know, if you claim credit for something that follows the economy up, you have to take the beating with it when it goes down. And it, it does seem that minor decisions have very little to do with it. The economy really is a, a road line that we're on, and it tells us how things are gonna go.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
And I don't, Mr. Rick or Jake, is this the same lot that we have the public restrooms parked on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Different lease.
It's right here.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mr. Manager, what do we pay in total out to leases per year on parking, just parking?
I believe it's about sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Sixty-eight thousand? And, and out of the parking meters, how much of that do we recoup?
Um.
But that's all, it just pays for?
We generate just about a hundred thousand dollars with, it's eighty thousand dollars, and it's twenty thousand dollars with parking fines. So I guess there's something to be said for adding more money and collecting more fines at least we can pay for the leases on the property.
And, and again, I look for the, for the interaction between not just what we charge for parking, but the fact that we just don't sustain parking lots, but that we actually beautify the downtown area in the meantime with it. And I think that was part of the concern that we had when we went and we adjusted parking rate increases in fees was because of the fact that any excess was gonna be pledged to the historic district in the down, revitalization of the downtown area. And now, you know, coming back to this, where we're back in this lease procedure again, and pretty much breaking even, we still don't, like you said, we still don't have a funding source to, to fuel the, the downtown district.
That, that's true, Councilman, because, you know, on, on top of those leases and those meters, you have to add the maintenance cost to the meters and the personnel to monitor those meters, so it's a wash.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Rick.
So what's the wishes of the commission, of the council?
Move for approval.
A motion to move for approval, and have a second?
Second.
And a second, further discussion?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can collaborate a little bit with our county, our vecinos. The courthouse is downtown. I believe one entity owns the building and the pueblo owns the streets, and, and we own, I don't know, the sewers or something. There, there's a need, the, the plaza benefits is all, there's a need. I would like to see some creative thinking. I'd also like to bring the landowners, maybe Ms. Brenner's representative, representative from Our Lady, to discuss as a community this, with maybe some representation from the county, and maybe someone from the village, if it's appropriate, a Taos pueblo, to really get our arms around this over the next year, 'cause this is a problem. I mentioned at our budget hearings, a nasty, rasty idea, an awful idea called CAM fees, Common Area Maintenance Fees. And that's what businesses do, and when they don't have a beautiful historic plaza to rely on to provide parking and other things. Probably not a good idea, but I would like to see something with all ideas just put on the table, so that we, we can look at it with fresh eyes. Councilman Gonzalez has a very valid point, and Mr. Bellis's financial accounting is right on. We're breaking even at best, and that's gotta stop. I'd like to revisit maybe that historic district grant, wherein a parking lot, a garage, might be, I mean, let's go after this, let's solve this issue. You know, we're not doing this in four years. So those are just some brainstorm thoughts. Get together with all the parties, all ideas on the table, and all the parties means the landowners, Our Lady of Guadalupe, the village. Let's, let's get this thing done. And all ideas on the table, including the drive CAM fee idea.
Thank you, Counselor. And Mr. Bellis, I know that that's something we talked about for a while now, and, you know, through our financial advisor, and figure out how we can afford to maybe move forward in that.
And one of the unique opportunities we have right now, Mr. Mayor, is with New Mexico D O T doing the study that they're doing, and we got the Main Street folks and E D D involved in that, they sent in some recommendations. And one of the things that we may get them to do, which I think would be very helpful because we have anecdotal evidence for it, is that a good percentage of the traffic congestion is related to the parking circulation problem. So that if we get that in the study, that may give us the justification for getting some D O T or federal money toward a parking solution as well.
Okay. So, we, we need a call for the vote?
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Senator. Go on to, uh...
If we can go on to matters of the council, I'd just like to tell Rick this thing, I was gonna tell Steve, but I didn't see him tonight. The portal at the old police department is leaking. I noticed it last night when I left that meeting, and the snow was melting and the water was dripping inside the portal. Right over here.
Thank you.
So matters from the council, the mayor and council. Council reports on committee assignments, report from Councilmember Gonzalez regarding the hospital nominee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had the council, the hospital nominating committee meetings with, over the course of the last roughly month, and happy to say that we have decided on three candidates to fill those positions, one being our very own Counselor Fred Peralta, to represent central Taos County, a gentleman by the name of Bruce Coleman, who will be the member at large, and a phenomenal woman by the name of Karen Matherley, who will oversee the southern Taos County area. All of them, I mean, we, this by far was probably one of the hardest nominating committees I've ever sat on, because of the caliber of candidates that were available to us. Almost every single one of them was an Ivy League grad with just an immense, immense amount of, of knowledge with public boards and, and we even had the, the deputy vice mayor of New York City that applied to, to this board. So this go-around was a really, really intense, and he's one avenue that I've tapped to, to help out, sit on boards even within the city, which he's willing. So all the way around, we got three really good candidates, and I think our hospital board will be in good hands moving forward. So that's about all I have.
Thank you, Counselor, 'cause I think, you know, it's something that we really need to get addressed down there, you know, and, you know, we do have a for-profit organization running for, running a nonprofit. You know, the county at some point is, if they can't get their act together, is feeling like they might pull that contract, so.
Yeah.
You know, I think that the, somebody needs to wake up and pay attention over there before that happens, so. Counselor Hahn?
Councilman Gonzalez, I wanna thank you for this, in the hospitals nominating committee. But I do have a number of concerns. When we were talking about the landfill, Mr. Bellis had stated incorrectly earlier that I had voted on an increase, and in fact, that's not the case. What I had told the landfill board was that I needed to come back to my governing body to present to them, and came prepared actually to do that tonight, and quite frankly, was disappointed that I didn't know there was a change afoot, but as busy as you are, Rick, I, no worries. Just, and you're getting hammered like Jake. But here's what I wanted to talk about, and I think it, it potentially could be a, a difficult conversation for us, but I think we need to have it in public. I think it's in the spirit of transparency and objectivity. You know, a year and a half ago, the Holy Cross had proposed a tax increase. The previous administration for the town of Taos proposed gross receipts tax increase just a few months ago. And now the hospital is quietly looking into initiatives to create a tax to stabilize their finances. And in view of the recent fluctuations at Holy Cross with policies and procedures and public concerns, the nominating committee representative and the nominating committee membership is lending valuable suggestions to enable and empower the hospital board with qualified candidates. And so I was actually, because of the fiduciary responsibility implied in all of these recent tax initiatives, I really was hoping to hear about all of the candidates and hoping to have a discussion to lend our representative on that nominating committee suggestions for her or his, his in this case, consideration. That being said, it's a done deal now. Here comes the difficult part. I am, you know, I'm very grateful, Councilman Peralta, that, for your past leadership at Holy Cross, and very grateful for the fact that you applied yet again to go through what has to be a very difficult and time-consuming effort, being on the chair of the board. The problem I'm having is that one of our council representatives is put in the unenviable position of having to nominate one of his own, or, or perhaps inadvertently offending him. Now, Councilman Peralta's a big man, he's not gonna get offended, but what if it were me? You know, I might have been offended. And so I'm asking for an even greater, uh, objective and transparent approach. I feel that as generous as Councilman Peralta is being with his willingness to serve on the board, I, I think our council representative on the nominating committee was inadvertently placed in an, in a conflicting situation. And so one idea I've had reflecting on this, Andrew, is that our representative on that board should be able to recuse himself from voting for a fellow councilperson. I think that message could be carried to the other members on the board, so that a recusal to a Holy Cross nominating committee doesn't mean I don't approve of my fellow councilmen, it means I have a working relationship with this person, and, and read the writing on the wall, you already know I'm gonna support him, but so, in a spirit of transparency, I'm not gonna do that. Now, if it came to the point where the council actually was able to offer to the councilman in this instant suggestions for his consideration, I think it would be incumbent upon us to, as a council, to recuse ourselves from... I think it would be incumbent upon us to, as a council, to recuse ourselves from voting for one of our own, if it were to come to that. Now, the system is not set up. We're dealing with, I feel, a very flawed system. Holy Cross and other entities has inadvertently designed a system that is flawed. In any event, the two suggestions that I just wanna put out there for future reference are, well, actually, three. It's my feeling that when I have a, I'm about to make a fiduciary commitment on the council's behalf, or even a strongly implied commitment, that I really need to come to the council and get their approval. So, the landfill board serves as my example there. The observations that I laid out with tax initiatives proposed by Holy Cross lays out that implied action. That would be number one, that we just agree that that's what we're gonna do. Now, if I'm sitting on stray hearts and it's a question of, well, you know, do I, you know, how do I vote on whether I focus on picking up dogs or cats? That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about fiduciary implications here. So, I would like us to address that. I would like us to set up a process whereby we actually talk about that stuff so that our council representative can go to that board with the authority of the council. And so, that implies that if we have a situation, and we may never run into this again, where such a fine candidate applies to be on the board, and now we're faced with, in this scenario, having, you know, to show Consulman Peralta our support, I think the fair and objective thing to do here is to actually recuse ourselves and explain to that committee why we're doing that. It's in a spirit of objective transparency. And lastly, in the place of a councilwoman or man who is being forced to consider a fellow consul member, we need to be able to recuse ourselves from that. I love Carol Merable. I love juvenile justice. I love sitting on the gang task force. But it would be, had, would have been absolutely inappropriate for me to have voted on that juvenile justice flow-through that we voted on tonight. So, I've reflected a lot on this and interested in your input, but those are my concerns. And I'd like for us to deal with it. I saw a great example earlier tonight where we did a, you know, where Consulman Peralta, out of concern for previous consulmen's possible interest in a contract while he served on this board, nothing implied by what I just said, but Consulman Peralta brought it up, and I think it's most astute. And that is what our citizens want, that openness and transparency. They don't wanna see any backroom deals, and we all know that that's part of life, and we need to do our best to show our, the people that have confidence in us that we are breaking through those barriers and have absolutely nothing to hide, and we'll recuse ourselves when it's appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and just for clarification, for it's, I'm actually the one that posed the question with regards to Consulman Silva. So, I hold myself in those same height regard standards, and one of the reasons being that this was not brought back to the council and honestly felt that it couldn't be brought back to the council was we were dealing, almost bordering in the lines of personnel issues. And this was something that I brought up at the board meetings. It's reflected in the minutes that in future nominating committees to let the individuals that are applying for the board of directors know that their information will be made public. And at this point in time, we didn't have that liberty, so we took them under the auspice of almost an executive session with regards to the discussion and the meeting itself. Luckily for me, I wasn't put in any predicament one way or another because I served as that board's chairperson. So, pretty much sat in the same position as the mayor where I really didn't have a vote, or was never put in a position to need to vote because every single candidate that was chosen and selected was selected as a, by majority of the nominating committee, including one of the individuals that sat on the board was Commissioner Blankenhorn. So, I mean, all that stuff will be reflected within the minutes, how we came to our decision. It was based on a rating system of each and every candidate, based on qualifications and how, what we felt they brought to the board. You know, the same could have been said with regards to Mr. Charlie Gonzalez, who had sat on that board for multiple years. I know Charlie very well. But at the same point, he didn't make the cut amongst the candidates. So, you know, for me, there's implicat, there's implications. Will always have implications all the way around with regards to what we did or what we do. I took, you know, the night that Consulman Peralta excused himself from the nominating committee for the sake of applying for the board of directors and opened that up to the council with regards to who was gonna sit on that nomination committee as a blessing from this council to make that decision to the best of my ability. Had it come down to me needing to vote, I would have recused myself with regards to Consulman Peralta because of the fact that we sit so closely on this board. And naturally, yes, I would have been more inclined to vote for him because I do wanna have some oversight within this council with regards to what happens on the Holy Cross Hospital Board of Directors. But given that, again, this task was extremely hard. I'd have to go back to the hospital within their bylaws to ask if those backgrounds are available outside of the individuals that were chosen. Because I know the sentiment was, was that Mr. Oxford from the Taos News had asked and requested all of the, or the applications and resumes for the individuals that had put in. We naturally went back to the candidates themselves and asked and said, well, would you be willing to make this information public? And seventy percent of the candidates said no, under the intention unless we are selected. So, I think it borders that line of privacy where individuals are willing to serve on committees and boards, but at the same time, not wanting to make their life public unless they're actually chosen for the position. So, I completely agree with you with regards to, you know, keeping the openness and transparency. In this instance, just felt that it was undoable, could not do it because of the fact of what the bylaws represented and how their interview applications went. So, well, I didn't even release names to Andrew Oxford as the nominating committee chair because of the fact that I didn't want to put anybody in a predicament where they were, you know, applying for a board position that they weren't gonna get. So, for me, it was saying, I'll release you the names, the applications and the resumes of the individuals that we selected after this board has been selected, and the individuals that weren't selected were properly notified. So, I was kinda put in that position, and that's even at the last, I remember the meeting where Consulman Peralta asked who would, who would sit on the nominating committee. I said nothing until everybody had pretty much said, well, I couldn't do it for one reason or another. So, with that, you know, that's one of the reasons that, you know, I didn't bring anything back to this council. The other thing being was that it happened in a pretty expedient time in that our board nominations were due fifteen days prior to the next meeting. So, we literally had about twelve days to go through the entire process, which was the formation of the nominating committee to the two interview sessions that we were gonna have, and that was it. So, we conducted interviews on a Thursday and a Monday, and that's pretty much everything that we had to deal with. It was really three meetings. But completely understand where you're coming from.
Well, I'm hoping, and thank you, Consulman. I really appreciate that. And again, I wanna thank you for your effort. And I'm grateful, Holy Cross is going to need the institutional knowledge that Consulman Peralta brings to the table, 'cause he's been there. But I'm concerned about, again, Consulman, if you have any contact with Peter or Consulman Peralta, if you end up on the board, 'cause now they're gonna be making their decision.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could look at that flawed process, and in some cases, where you have a governmental body and you have a representative from the governmental body sitting on a committee like that, could we perhaps, here's a middle road, Andrew, go into executive session? Now, the other factor here is, gee whiz, twelve days? It sounds like you're Jacob's office or Rick's office, you know, with people just saying, hey, we need this done yesterday, and that's inappropriate. These folks sitting on this board are gonna be making some heavy-duty decisions. And true, they're not in the day-to-day management, but they're gonna be decisions that affect every one of us, thirty-two thousand people in this county plus our visitors. So, I'm concerned about Holy Cross's flawed approach. I'm concerned about, or at least what I perceive is their flawed, the timeliness of it. And then, more importantly, well, not more importantly, but as importantly, the way we as a council are going to deal with this kind of issue in the future. How are we going to show our vecinos who put us in these chairs that we are transparent, that we will recuse ourselves for, at a moment's notice, or in some cases, have to recuse this council from a consideration like we might have faced had, had Consulman Peralta had that decision been left up to us? It puts us in a bad situation, very conflicted. So, I've said enough. I think everybody understands. And certainly, call me if you have questions and critiques.
And, Councillor Han, I will give you a call because, you know, you know, there's a number of boards that we're all on, and I think Jake can elaborate on this, is what they're looking for is people voting members of boards because there's such a diverse group that you nominate to the board, and if they don't have the authority to vote at the board meeting, there's no reason for that member to be there. He'd be an ex-official, because if he's gonna have to bring everything back here to get clarification on and then go back to the board, the meetings will, yeah, you know, never will be, will take in place. It's like, that, just like I sit on the NCRTD board, and I'm the chair of that board, and if every time we make a decision, I had to bring it back to council or back to the commission to get approval. That's why they appointed me to, to represent them over there, knowing that I'm gonna try to make the best decision for our members here in town, that that GRT that is being collected is being spent dollar for dollar. That's, you know, and it just creates a kind of a bottleneck. Unless we appoint totally non-voting members, we can vote and vote and appoint Mr. Bellis and Mr. Codwell to attend all these meetings, then they'll have to come back for our recommendation to go vote. And I think it just creates a bottleneck, and I think the idea...
Well, as, as Mr. Mayor... Go ahead.
I would say with that, you know, the other unique situation that we're in is that we're all elected as individuals, not as a body. The decisions we obviously make, we make as a body, but at the same point, like, you know, much like Mr. Northrup criticized me tonight of the decisions I made, those, yes, they are my decisions. Those are the decisions that I took full and wholeheartedly on my shoulders. So, even with regards to any of the boards of directors that I sit on, it's, again, a decision that maybe doesn't necessarily come in reflection of this council, 'cause outside of this, these council chambers, we are just individuals appointed to the boards that we do sit on, which I think it's great for the transparency purpose to bring back, as you instituted, the council reports on the various boards that we sit on. But outside of that, you know, I don't think there's really anything that would bind us to saying, well, hold on here, let me go check with my council in two weeks and I'll come back, you know, with their decision.
Understood, and, and here's my response to you, Mayor, and Consulman Gonzalez. Like any family under stress, we need to have, we need to declare really clear, simple, straightforward boundaries. And as I've reflected on this issue, a very simple boundary is if I am committing tax funds, or if I have a fiduciary responsibility, I need to report to my higher authority, which is this council. So, we can, we, this is just my opinion. I think we need to discuss this and really flush it out. I need direction, because I could have, we could avoid the whole Taos landfill thing. I could have suggested option C, made the presentation tonight, and I think you all would have gone for it, voted for it, and we'd be done with that issue.
I think, but, but part of the beauty of the...
There was a fiduciary responsibility there that I, I could not commit our citizens' tax dollars or increased sewage fees, and there are counterweights to that possible raise as well. So, where do we draw the line? Where do we draw that line? Is it, and I'm thinking, well, it's strictly fiduciary, but is it? So, we really need to, I think, ponder this, and then I need guidance. I think it would help, Mr. Mayor, for the council to have guidance on this issue, and that will lay the template for future good government, I feel, in future years. We will have established once and for all, this is when you recuse. This is how you approach this issue. If it's a question of the NTRC board or whatever, my answer would be, if you're talking about in-house expenditures on something, marketing or something, now, this is just me thinking, Ben, it's your responsibility to hook up the appropriate players, but the money's already there. So, it's, it's not a fiduciary, you've got a responsibility there, but it's not like you're committing future funds. The problem I have with Holy Cross is, I'm pretty well convinced that we are gonna be paying, you know, future funds to Holy Cross in some kind of tax issue. I hope not, but, you know, I have major questions with that organization, as you all know. I asked Peter Hofstadter, I'd just like to know what your, what the net profit is. Every business deserves to have a net profit. I don't begrudge you that, but as a taxpayer, as someone who funds your hospital, I have a right to know that. Well, he doesn't know, and he hasn't gotten back to me in six months. And I also need to know what, what is the, is there any vested interest between Quorum and HPG? They're primary supplier. You know, we all do business with each other. I buy windows from Andrew, and Andrew buys lumber from Dan, okay. But as a taxpayer, and as this is a quasi-public-private hospital, I have a right to know. And I'm still waiting. Now, I'm off topic. I really want us to stay on the recusal business.
But here's the thing that you don't understand. There is a...
My wife would tell me there's much I don't understand.
No, no, but I'm saying there is a public-private partnership between Holy Cross Hospital and the county.
Yes.
And that's the lease.
Yes.
And that's it.
Yes.
Holy Cross Hospital is a whole private entity.
Correct.
Okay? They have no responsibility to tell you anything. Okay? Now, they don't. By law, they don't have any responsibility to tell you anything. They have certain reports that, because they're 501(c)(3), that they have to make, the 990s. But outside of that, they are a private entity, and they can conduct their business any way they want to. However, back when Holy Cross Hospital, and I shouldn't say Holy Cross Hospital, 'cause that's not the proper...
Taos Health Systems?
When Taos Health Systems came to an agreement to lease the hospital from the county and took the responsibility to get the whole thing built and all that stuff for the county, the board at that time agreed to make certain things public. Board meetings. They agreed to set up a nominating committee, which they never had before, which would have a representative from the county and a representative from the town on it, and, and other, and other people not on the hospital board to assist in ensuring that representation from the community was on the board of directors. The hospital has a responsibility to be whole, or have a bottom line, as you say. That's their responsibility. That's a responsibility. When there is a tie-in to public funds for that bottom line, there's a responsibility for them to ensure that the services they're providing meet the requirements of that partnership. And that's the area that has to be above-board and very transparent. But that's the extent to it. And it's like any other boards that you might sit on, if you're sitting on, let's say, the tri-county board, not a public entity, it's a private entity. Your responsibilities on that board are the private, and your responsibility is to ensure that that entity is viable and can sustain itself, and that's your responsibility as a board member. So, you have to understand that there's some separations here. Not, not to say that there isn't a responsibility as a community member to try to make sure that what you're doing is in the best interest of the community, because that's your responsibility.
Well-
Same thing on that hospital board or anything else. But just understand that, under a legal ease position, you don't have to be as transparent as you would like them to be.
Well, of course, we're off-topic, and I hear what you're saying, Councilman, but I don't buy it. I do believe there is a responsibility to account for, but we're off-topic in the sense that the darker issue, in my opinion, is to define clearly when we must come back to this board. I felt like I had to with the landfill board. Dan, our mayor has a different perspective, we probably all do, and I'd really like to flush this out. I'd really like to flush this out, because I could have gone up or down on the landfill a month ago, and we'd be done with it.
No, you wouldn't.
Well, Mr. Bellis has some new information, which I don't have.
I'm just saying, if you could vote on the landfill board to say, I agree with this position, and I'm going to take it to my council for their approval, council doesn't have to prove it.
Right.
But you have to bring that back to us, because we have the final authority, because it's a budgetary. It's a fiduciary responsibility that this board has. That's the difference, because that's within the public realm of what you're doing. I'm talking about when you're going from the public realm to the private realm, and this is what the mayor is also saying, it's a different, it's a different animal. And that's what we're trying to say, is it's not the same animal. Your responsibility on that board is different than your responsibility is to sit on the tri-county board, if that was what you're on, or anything else. I'm not saying you're on any of those boards, I'm just using as an example. That's a different entity. And there's a responsibility by the entity, if they're using public funds, to ensure that they, that they are properly reporting the use of those public funds. That's a responsibility. But beyond that, some of that stuff that they do is within the entity itself. In this case, because you're using, we are a member of this board as a budgetary item, in other words, we put money into this, then there's a responsibility to bring back your report, your recommendation to us. With all the stuff that's in here, and there's nothing that's left out, there's all three for us to look at, and you can say, you know, what, how you feel about them, and say, this is my report, and that's your obligation, I agree with you. But it's, that's what I'm just saying, is that you've got to separate that responsibility on this board from the responsibility that members of this board may sit on other committees, because they want to, as citizens, to be participants, and report back here some of the things that are happening, and also take advice that you can use back in there. So, I'm not saying that you don't do it, I'm just trying to say, here's the separation between what you do publicly, and this entity has your responsibilities here, and then what you do outside of this to your representation as a member of the community.
Well, Jacob, with all of the extra spare time that you have these days, you know, when you're up at 2:00 in the morning and can't sleep, I would appreciate some very clear boundaries around this. And as other counselors have opinions and thoughts, and Rick, you're quite knowledgeable, and Dan, you've been around the block a time or two. I think not only would it be an interesting study for me intellectually, but important for our community to know where things stop and where things start.
And Counselor, you know, there was a very good training that we went to, and ethics, the ethics training really spells out when you need to recuse yourself, and when you should recuse yourself and stuff, and I think, you know, that was a very, very good training. I think Counselor Cantu went to it, and I went to it, and I've been to it before in the past, when I first became a commissioner. But I think, you know, that spells out a lot of, a lot of those ethics, you know, when you should recuse yourself and when you shouldn't, but as far as being on boards and what you need to bring back, I think that's something that I think Jake and Rick can work on and bring something back to us, as far as that specific, you know, when we're talking about a budget increase or monies that are going to be spent, yes, that needs to be brought back to the board for decision anyway, because you can't make that decision solely on your own. So, but yeah, Rick and-
Yeah, Counselor, I think we're not going to be able to give you one hard and fast rule, because the easiest way to define it, and I think Councilman Peralta hit on it, is to look at the bylaws and the structure of the organization. For example, when you sit at the landfill board, the same folks that are there from 9:00 to 11:00, then sit from 11:00 to 12:00 on the Intergovernmental Council. Now, on the Intergovernmental Council, that's an association, so you can vote on procedural things there, but you really can't bind, even though you represent the governing body, you can't bind, no one in that room can. It's to develop a consensus, and that's the way it's structured. But when you're meeting as the landfill board, it is a governmental entity created by a joint partnership act and approved by the state in Mexico. So, you become that board of directors, and that's why you see the financial reports. They don't bring the financial report to the landfill to the quest of town council for approval. You're approving that, you're directing the operation of that entity. The only thing, and it will be the same with the JPA for the 911, the only time, as has been indicated, that you really will need to bring back something from the board is because there's, in that JPA, there's no power to appropriate money. The collective jurisdictions have to agree on that. One of the malfunctions of the JPA for the 911, for example, was that they had meetings continuously representing all the entities, but nothing ever got done, because nobody sitting at the table had any authority to make any decisions to apply money or to allocate staff. It all was tied up with the town as the fiscal agent. So, therefore, none of the governing bodies ever appropriated more money for it, because there was no pressure for them to have to do that. So, there's benefits and negatives to either one, but really, it's going to be dictated by how that organization is set up. If it's a 501(c)(3) and you're sitting at as a private individual, even though you may be, you're going to be asked to sit on a lot more things, because you are on the council, and in that board's mind, they may believe that you represent the council, but you don't. There's no connection between your actions here and your actions on that board, other than, as you said, if something comes before you and there's a conflict of interest, because you can't be both. And we can, what we can do is, we can develop, which I think we probably, in local government, always should do and don't, is a primer as to what each of the government, each of the committees and assignments that any of the members are appointed to is about statutorily, in DFA's eyes, in state's eyes, what role you serve on there, and what powers are assigned to that by the creation of that organization.
And Rick, with that, you know, the thing I guess I look at too is, again, going back to the comment that the mayor made, which is sitting through those ethical trainings and everything else, is that really, outside of these council chambers, inside of publicly-disclosed meeting quorum, we hold no power over or authority over this board, none whatsoever. So, I can go sit on 30 boards outside of this council chamber if I wanted to, even some that maybe did business with the council. The only discretion I would have is to recuse myself if it came to a business dealing with that organization or with that entity. So, you know, it's a really, I understand what Counselor Hahn is alluding to, but, you know, I think at the same point, any one of us up here would be hard-pressed to give up any authority that we have, or that's been vested in us by our constituents, not by this board, but by our constituents, because even at, on the constituency level, you'd have constituents that said, you know, would say, you know, that same perception, well, if he's on the council, he has, you know, the ability to make decisions for that council, but in all reality, once it comes down to a vote, if I'm outvoted, it doesn't matter, it's null and void. But outside of this room, I can't bind Counselor Peralta, you, Counselor Hahn, Counselor Cantu to anything. You know, so that's where I look at it and say, well, even with regards to this nominating committee, it, when you all appointed me and allowed for me to do that, that was vesting your authority in me to make that decision to the best of my ability, without having to come back for a second blessing, because I think if you're trying to navigate the political process, even on just a nonprofit board or a for-profit board, whatever you sit on, you'll never get it done. You know, and I think that's, that's the beauty of this democracy, period, in that, you know, aren't, the openness and transparency that we perceive through these public meetings, unless we're calling each, one another behind closed doors, you know, we're doing everything out here in front of the public, period. And in all instances, you know, if I were to go sit, for example, on the Help, I sit on the Help New Mexico Board of Directors, which has nothing to do with this council, the information I choose to disseminate back to this board is strictly because I want to do it. I'm not bound by any legislative authority to bring anything back to this council. I think the majority of us wouldn't sit on a board that would put us into an implication, and that's, you know, I learned within my first couple of weeks in office, from the Attorney General's office, is be very wary of the boards that you sit on, make sure that you're very astute with regards to what they're doing in the financial realm, because the decisions you make, even with that board outside of the board you're elected to, will have implications. And be it, you know, misuse of funds on that side, or, you know, there's any number of ways that fraud can be looked at. So, for me, it's sitting on boards that represent the highest in ethical standard in the way they conduct business, and in the way they conduct their meetings as well, which is part of that illusion that, you know, Councilmember Peralta was alluding to, that this board with Holy Cross vowed to hold open and public meetings, as opposed to going behind closed doors, which they very well could. But, you know, it's part of that process of saying, the board affiliations I want to be affiliated with are going to be open and transparent, it will have public input, because the people that put me up here, even though I might sit on a private board out there, I'm still perceived as this elected official here. So, again, regional coalition is a prime example of that, which is federally funded, and yes, the city does give a contribution for membership, but yet, at the same point, 90% of the decisions that are made have a federal implication, which would mean nothing really to this, to the city, other than the true buy-in of what we are as a community in and itself, close to Los Olimos. So, again, I'd be one as one council member, and I'm happy to go in the direction whatever council gives, but for me, I'd be hard-pressed to give up any authority outside of these council chambers in any capacity, with regards to any board I sit on. You know, especially one that is given blessing to by this council, by majority of this council. So, that's just where I sit personally, so you know, and in the course of the last couple of years, and I'm really glad that you brought up the issue of board dissemination, of what we do outside of council in here, so that our fellow counselors just kind of have a know of what we're up to. But yet, at the same point, you know, I look at this HCH board, which is extremely controversial, has been for some time now, and for me, it was saying, well, first off, it wouldn't have been my first choice to sit on, but at the same point, I took it on with the fact that when I took it on, I was going to do it to the best of my ability, and choose, in my eyes, what were the best candidates, but still, even at that, I didn't have a, if I didn't have a majority, you don't have a majority. So, that's just where I feel I come from. Again, I'd be hard-pressed to give up any authority outside of this council chamber with any board I sit on.
Well, thanks. I think, I think we should keep this going. I think it'll be, now that it's out there and in public, Jacob and Rick and Dan and the rest of us, as time goes by, can just kind of keep it in the back of our minds. Let's not lose sleep over it, but I think that transparency is what our public is looking And so, appreciate the discussion, let's just stop there.
So, thank you. So, we'll go ahead and move on. Is there any other reports that need to be brought up at this time?
If not, we have pending litigation, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following executive and public session information item, action item, discussion, consideration, decision regarding spring ditch lawsuit. This item may be discussed in closed session under Open Meeting Act exemption 10-15-1HT H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Counsel, we have a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
We have a second. Are you guys break dead already?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Maybe. Yes.
They got me for that one time, remember?
See.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
If you're awake. They got me for that one.
We have a motion to come back into regular session.
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Am I supposed to go into it in a certain order?
No.
You do it however you want. Counselor Hahn?
Yes.
Counselor Peralta?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Cantu?
Yes.
Turn to you, Mr. Caldwell, for a report.
Before I do that, can you tell me who made that motion and seconded?
Me?
Motion. And I seconded.
The record should reflect that the town council went into executive session to discuss pending litigation regarding the spring ditch lawsuit pursuant to Open Meetings Act exemption 10-15-1H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. The council discussed only those items set forth in the agenda with regard to pending litigation. No decisions were made, and no action was taken.
No, motion to accept the town attorney's report?
So move.
Second.
Second, discussion, no, call for the vote.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Hahn?
Yes.
Counselor Cantu?
Yes.
Changed it up on ya.
Heaven you're awake.
No.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'd like to move that we mediate with the spring ditch representatives and direct Mr. Caldwell to reach out to that organization and explore mediation.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Counselor Cantu?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Peralta?
Yes.
Counselor Hahn?
Yes.
You hesitated there.
No.
I was thinking, Counselor Peralta's here.
Here?
You sit here.
No.
You didn't?
No. It's too late.
It's way late. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a second.
Mayor, just to let council know that you'll probably get a call tomorrow, asking if you can come in before Saturday and sign that proclamation we're doing with the county for Dennis Hopper Day, and to inform you that Tuesday will be the second in the forums, public forums on marketing- second in the forums, uh, public forums on marketing and tourism.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's go home.